Good evening, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to this special meeting of council. This meeting is called for the specific purpose of to consider the final report from Mr. George Rusty, interim auditor general regarding the review of the Southwest Quadrant Project. Under council's meeting rules, no other business can be discussed at this special meeting. All members of council, I think Council Miles is coming, yes, she's here, are present this evening. I wish to remind everyone to please ensure your cellphones and all electronic devices are turned off or placed on non-audible mode during the course of the meeting. Do I have a motion, Mr. Chair and Mr. Clerk? I have a motion by Council Willens, seconded by Council Moore, that the agenda for the special council meeting on May 4th be approved as printed and circulated and that we accept the E1 correspondence from Sheila Jacobson, Brampton resident dated May 4th. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, that's carried. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act or any matter to be considered on today's agenda? If so, indicate. Mr. Clerk, no one has indicated any pecuniary interest. Before we, as council, consider Mr. Rusty's report and hear from the public on this matter, I would first ask Ms. Marilyn Ball, our acting chief administrative officer, to provide some opening remarks about this evening's meeting, purpose, and content. And maybe I'll just go through the rest first. Second, Mr. Rusty will provide some remarks about this review and findings, and after Ms. Balls and Mr. Rusty's remarks, I would ask council that we refrain from asking questions at that point, that we proceed to hear from the public next through delegations. After hearing from the public, council can then ask its questions or make comments of Mr. Rusty's report, and we can consider the report and next steps. Please note, this is the same process we followed during our last special council meeting this past January, when council considered the final report from Mr. Jim McCarter, interim auditor general, regarding the City of Brampton's finances. Ms. Ball.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, Brampton city citizens, and members of the audience, and my colleagues. I am Marilyn Ball, acting CAO, and this is an important evening, and I thought it was critical that I make a few comments before the evening gets underway. Just to reiterate, Madam Mayor, on September 10th, 2014, City Council appointed George Rusty as the City of Brampton's auditor general on an interim basis for the sole purpose of reviewing the process and administration of the Southwest Quadrant, also referred to as SWQ project. This special meeting of council was called to consider the final report of the interim auditor on the Southwest Quadrant renewal plan and a staff report concerning the cost associated with the auditor general's work. I want to state for the record this evening that the procurement that the city went through for the Southwest Quadrant renewal project, which is the subject of the auditor general's report in this evening's meeting, is also the subject of a lawsuit that is before the courts. To meet council's responsibility to protect the interests of the corporation in the lawsuit, there are ground rules for dealing with the questions and the discussion that will take place tonight, and I want to review these with you and with the audience, and I ask for strict adherence to them. Speakers in our audience who are addressing council and members, council and members alike should be aware that council will be limited to matters on the agenda. There will be no questions or discussion entertained about matters which are issues in the litigation. In this regard, the city's legal counsel will advise if discussion strays into matters which are before the court, and I ask that you respect and adhere to the city solicitor's advice. And we all understand there are strong views about this project. I encourage everyone to behave civilly towards those with opposing points of view or interest. All persons should conduct themselves with decorum, show courtesy and respect to the interim auditor general, council members, and staff members, and members of the public. Everyone should be using respectful language and behavior in relation to all persons in attendance this evening. The chair, Madam Mayor, has both the authority and the responsibility to main order during this meeting, and I ask that you respect the position of the chair. So, thank you very mu- thank you very much, and I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Rusty, please come forward for your remarks and welcome. I understand Mr. Paul Emanuele, an advisor to you during the review, is also in attendance this evening. I also understand Ms. Fay Booker was not available this evening, so, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the public. In September 2014, the City Council appointed me as its interim auditor general to investigate the process and administration on the Southwest Quadrant Project, through which the city decided to deliver a mixed-use revitalization plan for its southwest downtown area, particularly to erect a new west tower and northerly addition to its current 1991 City Hall, and to select a private sector partner builder for the project. The administrative space needs of the city have been looked at for some time over the last 15 years, and there was a previous request for expressions of interest process, 2005 to 2007, which was canceled by the city for a number of reasons. The city then, in 2009, initiated a process which led to a request for proposals. From a legal point of view, the city corporation was acting on its natural person powers. In other words, the city has the same powers as a natural person to contract, to enter into agreements, to negotiate, and to build a building, which was, of course, the objective of this process. On June 24th, 2009, the city decided to issue a request for proposals, known as an RFP, having adopted a number of guiding principles for the, to govern the search for a builder to build the City Hall annex. And those council's guiding principles were adopted by bylaw, and there are other directions laid down by the council at the time. Accordingly, there was an RFP issued, a fairly lengthy and detailed RFP, but not unusual in the normal course of things. The process leading to the choice of a builder for the City Hall annex and associated project was to follow a process known as competitive dialogue. And the process of competitive dialogue, which essentially means that the city was conducting concurrent negotiations and discussions with various bidders on the RFP project, was the subject of concern. It was considered a novel approach to contractual decision-making by a public sector body. As it turns out, it wasn't that novel an approach, and as I say, it simply involved concurrent discussions with bidders, maintaining, of course, at all times strict confidentiality with respect to the bids of bidders received, and not sharing that information with other bidders. The competitive dialogue process was duly entered into and conducted over a long period of time. It was extremely well documented, and I think if there's one message that I'd like to convey, which is the thing that stood out most to me during the process of my seven, almost eight-month investigation, is the diligence of city staff in documenting in detail all of the process in every respect. The competitive dialogue process was documented, the negotiation process was documented. In the competitive dialogue, there were agendas, minutes kept, and, of course, from time to time, there were reports to the city council. Now, the competitive dialogue process was the, was one of the principal issues which led to the council's decision to appoint me to investigate this matter. Another issue which arose, and which was another principal reason for the city's decision to appoint me as auditor general, was the issue of the degree to which counselors were involved in the process. There was a feeling that there was a secrecy, an obsession with secrecy at the time. Counselors, or some counselors, felt that they were not being kept up with the details of the various parts of the process. There was some complaint, there was a motion at council to step down the matter for the time being and to allow more time for consultation. The council itself decided not to do that and decided to vote on the issue, which was voted on on March 28th, 2011, which was to adopt a report recommending that the firm of Dominus be adopted, accepted as the builder of the City Hall project, the preferred respondent. In the RFP process, there were three responses received, one from Dominus, one from a firm called Morguard Construction, and one from a company called Inzola. And as the mayor has mentioned, the Inzola Corporation, whose bid was disqualified in the midst of the process, involving communications to, or alleged communications to the council, and to failure to sign a confidentiality agreement, Inzola has brought an action against the city for bias and negligence and breach of contract. And that action is now proceeding in the courts, and I have had to be very careful in my investigation to avoid getting into issues or disclosing information which would prejudice the city in, or the court in the process now before it. In the midst of my investigation, I have had a significant amount of assistance from staff, starting with the former CAO, John Corbett, and his associate, Matthew Palladina. I was, I actually had an office upstairs on the sixth floor for upwards of three months. I was in there every day, all day, and each day I would receive more and more material for my investigation. Ultimately, the supply of material which I received amounted to over 60 large binders, probably an average of three inches at least of documents. 60 binders are stacked about that high, which is sitting in my office at the present time, and I have reviewed all of the material that was provided to me. Another issue which led to my investigations being commenced by council was confidentiality and the role of confidentiality, which is a normal part of the RFP process. And those of whom have been involved in the process have been requested to sign a confidentiality agreement. Morguard and Dominus did sign the confidentiality agreement. Inzola did not. The, yes, well, the Southwest Quadrant process, which is what I'm investigating, by the way, I was not asked to investigate the financial issues. This, of course, was a competitive process, and there are issues involved when there's a competitive process, that you can't have significant variances along the way by respondents to the process, because, of course, it may skew the fairness of the evaluation system. The ultimate decision to award the contract to Dominus involved the creation of the building, and of course, this all happened, by the way, almost four years ago now, and the building is now built. The contracts were duly entered into. As far as I know, there has been no, to my knowledge, significant complaint about the construction of the building itself, or about the validity of the contracts which led to its construction. The contract to Dominus, built on city-owned land, is to cost the city $8.2 million per year in lease-to-own payments for 25 years, following which the city owns the building. I have not gone extensively into the issue of the financial aspects of the various responses to the RFP. For a start, we're dealing with a unique construction project. Second of all, we're dealing with a situation extending over a very long period of time. And thirdly, we're dealing with responses which couldn't necessarily be easily compared to each other. It was an apples-and-oranges issue. There were different terms, different reversionary terms. Under the Morguard proposal, the city would acquire the building for market value at the end of the term. In the Dominus project, the city owns the building at the end of the term. And there were various issues involved, involving the term, the financing, and construction details, and of course, they had different project architects. The architect put forward by Dominus is the Zeidler Partnership, one of the, I believe, most reputable architectural firms in the country, and the architects of many very, very major and very successful buildings. So, the city obtained, I think, an excellent, high-quality building during the process. The council, at the end of the process, were given the opportunity to actually see the display panels, which demonstrated the look of the building, as it was conceived by Petroff Architects for Morguard and Zeidler on behalf of Dominus. But it was not a design competition. The City of Toronto, for instance, when they erected their City Hall in the mid-1960s, had a design competition, and everyone came and saw the designs. But this, the evaluation process, in the case of the City of Brampton and the Southwest Quadrant Project, was very, very detailed and dealt very highly in evaluative criteria. It's, I'm also very impressed by the number of reports by various consultants, the number of very high-quality presentations prepared by the staff and presented to the council over the long period of time that this all took place. Ultimately, I believe that it was a fair process, and I believe that staff acted properly and served the city well in bringing forward the recommendation that it did, and I believe that the city has made a good choice. Now, I have not been involved in deciding or concluding in my own mind or stating whether or not the city, in quotes, obtained value for money. First of all, that's quite beyond my range of expertise, I'm a municipal lawyer, and, second of all, it wasn't in the criteria which led to my appointment. Now, in January, the CAO, Mr. Corbett, then CAO, retained to assist me in the investigation two firms of consultants, Fay Booker and Associates, to look at the financial aspects, and procurement, Procurement Corporation, Mr. Emanuele, to assist in the procurement issues. And both of those consultants have provided their reports to me, I have their reports. All of the material I have, of course, is available to the city corporation, should council decide that it requires any of it, including the consultants' reports in full. I have attempted, in my final report, which I'm sure you've all found long, tedious, and boring, all 114 pages of it, I have included in that report what I regard as the more important conclusions of Mr. Emanuele and Ms. Booker, and I've also had great cooperation from Mr. Julian Patterson, who, I gather, has a new office of commissioner. He was commissioner and the principal key person in the city throughout the RFP process. And Mr. Patterson, I've met with him, I've interviewed him, and I've also interviewed, actually, two of the counselors, Counselor Spravieri and Counselor Moore. I've interviewed a number of staff members, I've interviewed Mr. Patterson on a number of occasions, and I believe that the quality of the work, particularly of Mr. Patterson, has been very high and has served the council very well. I have concluded that, first of all, the transaction was properly handled, it was well documented, and it followed the appropriate, very lengthy and comprehensive process that one would hope that a municipal corporation would follow in a project of this magnitude. And it is a large project, basically $205 million with respect to the Southwest Quadrant, and there are other phases as well involving a transaction involving a George Street property. But, and the total cost, I believe, of the entire project of its build-out is well over $500 million. But this part was $205 million. The cost to the city, as I say, arose from the competitive process, the competitive dialogue process, the negotiations, and what's termed in the report baffled, best and final offer. And throughout that process, starting with the RFP, there was very intensive and comprehensive evaluation based on criteria set down with a point system set down for the various aspects of the proposal, financial, completeness, technical. There were extensive evaluations and reports done in all of these areas, and these were all presented to the council in March of 2011, when it made the decision to proceed with Dominus as the builder. I think that's a brief introduction to my report. The report is in front of you, it's a very, as I say, a very long and detailed report, but I believe that the magnitude of the process and the instructions of council, I believe, were justified, I hope council will agree with me, were justified by the report that has been produced. And the report is before you now, I believe it's been posted online, and it's been available for review by council and the press and the public. So, Madam Mayor, I'll be happy to respond to questions, but that's my introduction at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Rusty. We agreed earlier that we would hear from the public next, so we will proceed with public delegations before council's turn for questions and comments in their consideration of the report. Before this meeting was published this past Friday, we did receive one delegation request from Mr. Hash Kadim, a Brampton resident. Today, Mr. Kadim withdrew his delegation request for tonight's meeting. Since the agenda was published, council received the following additional delegations: Mr. Peter Bailey, Mr. Doug Bryden, John Buck, Chris Benajar, and that's it for now. As you entered the chambers this evening, there was a table at the entrance where additional persons could register their request to delegate council about this matter. I will call the names from the list after going through the additional delegation request list that I just read from. If other persons here tonight wish to speak to council about this report, I will ask that you please come forward, since this is the designated time at this meeting to hear your comments about the interim auditor general's final report. For all public delegations this evening, you will be given five minutes to speak. This is to ensure that everyone who wants to speak will get a chance to address council. The clock will be running in front of you at the podium to let you know how much time you've used. When you do come forward, please state your name at the beginning so the city can include it in our meeting record. Please focus on the interim auditor general's final report, as this is the purpose of tonight's meeting. I want to welcome our first delegation, Mr. Peter Bailey.
Hello, Madam Mayor, counselors, city staff, Mr. Rusty, members of the public. My name is Peter Bailey, and I'm a resident of Brampton. I'm here tonight to just let you know that I am angered, and I feel betrayed with the taxpayer-funded $269,000 report that was supposed to provide the truth of why a relatively simple project, a small, medium office building, has become not only the elephant in the room, but has now joined the growing list of scandals that have plagued our city and has harmed our image and our reputation. I am angered because the whole fiasco represents an aberration of responsibility. I feel betrayed because we put our trust, all due respect, sir, put our trust in an individual who has failed to deliver a report that explains how a municipality like ours, top-heavy with bureaucrats, and highly-paid staff, were incapable of managing what should have been a simple, straightforward endeavor. I am angered because I feel the report is condescending in its text and in its content, as well it fails to address the topic of possible malfeasance or misconduct on the part of anyone involved with the project. I feel betrayed because the report fails to mention the obvious, and that is that some members of council and some staff acted irresponsibly and failed to perform their duties as required of them. They wittily entered a process in which they could not find out what they were buying or how much it really cost. I am angered because at several junctures, when the questions were being raised, were being asked, it was said the matter is before the courts, and I would better stop to any further discussions. This report makes the same claim, so why was it allowed to drag on for several months with a price tag of $269,000? I feel betrayed because much of the discussion surrounding the author of this report, and whatever else related to this report, was carried out in secrecy, in closed sessions, in camera, and not in the open public forum. So, to sum up, I hope this council takes measures to recoup all, if not most, of the $220,000 paid for this inadequate, commissioned waste of taxpayers' dollars, and if indeed we have to wait for the courts to have their shot at this, then let so be it. But then, I hope this council doesn't hesitate to unanimously pressure Queens Park into launching an independent and unbiased full judicial inquiry launching an independent and unbiased full judicial inquiry covering all aspects of this project, from its conception to its ultimate completion. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bryden. Could I ask Mr. Doug Bryden to come down?
Madam Mayor, my name is Doug Bryden, I'm co-chair of Citizens for a Better Brampton. For credentials, I'm a former senior vice president of Bramley for development across the country in Canada. I am the project manager, or was the project manager in the early stages for Eaton Centre in downtown Toronto, and the project director of the Royal Bank Plaza. So, I've been in real estate now for over 50 years, so I think I feel I have some credibility in terms of speaking to this issue. Given the fact that the CFBB was formally initially, formed initially three years ago due to what we considered a flawed RFP and contract award for the City Hall expansion, we have been following this project with more than a keen eye. We have made numerous submissions to council and the media on various concerns throughout the process and continue to do so today. I have three comments to make. One, we add our voice to the chorus of upraised shouts in the community and beyond, saying that this report lacks credibility. It is largely based on a series of interviews and discussions with staff, some of whom have already departed, and consultants, all of whom were deeply involved in the development of the competitive dialogue process and contract award through to the actual construction and partial occupancy of the City Hall expansion. With a lawsuit hanging over their collective heads, why would anyone admit to a flawed, little-understood process, or that the process could have been implemented better, or that staff acted improperly, or without authority? Shouldn't council have been able to anticipate the outcome without spending an inordinate amount of taxpayer money to this point, according to the, to this point, according to the media, having reached now $268,000? No attempt seems to have been made to interview outside groups like ourselves that might have had a different view or perspective based on the proposal call and development experience. That seems an obvious shortcoming. A listing of those interviewed should have been included as an addendum. Mr. Rustai appears to have had an altogether similar experience in the neighbouring community of Oshawa, where his report there enraged the public and garnered charges of whitewash. Perhaps if councils could set different parameters for these investigative reports and how they should be mandated and prepared, credibility of the fact-finding could be improved. Best practice would have been to hire a well-known specialist in municipal procurement rather than a lawyer whose firm had past connections with the city. It would have allayed any sense of conflict of interest. Two, it seems very hard to understand why the city needed to go to the expense of hiring a highly-paid consultant to recommend and help implement the competitive dialogue RFP process, a European import procurement concept which was totally unfamiliar in Canada. It was only instigated in the UK in 2006 to be used in large and complex projects. To date, so few have been completed that there is limited experience with its success or legal exposures. The interpretation of the process by staff and the Canadian consultant resulted in extreme secrecy and control of information, shutting out even the elected politicians as well as the public. In our opinion, it was simply an inappropriate, costly, and unduly complicated concept to be used in Brampton to build this relatively small, straightforward City Hall expansion project for which the public demanded transparency and accountability. Too much authority and latitude was delegated to staff who were themselves unfamiliar with the process and seemingly not schooled in development matters. And yet, Mr. Rustai has no trouble exhorting the concept and process as being unflawed, well-implemented, and appropriate for Brampton. We believe he is a little out of touch with reality here in Brampton. Three, when 40-plus RFP packages were taken out by a variety of interested parties, but only three applications were received, why didn't the alarm bells sound that there just might be something wrong with the call? After all, the City Hall expansion project should have been seen as an attractive opportunity by the development community.
Mr. Bryden, can you summarize, please? You're at your five-minute mark.
Am I at five?
Yeah.
Okay, can I wrap?
Yep.
Particularly with a solid Brampton city tenancy in an economically difficult climate at the time. We can only speculate on why the response was so completely poor: process too secretive, terms too unfair and one-sided, Brampton passed reputation for calls...
...of George Street and Queen Street was owned by the city. Dominus was engaged to do, to build a building at a cost of about $94 million, a building shell, actually. The city of Brampton, as I understand it, had to do the walls, floors, ceilings, finishing and equipment. So, basically, for $94 million, the city of Brampton got a building shell on a piece of property that they owned already, and at the end of 25 years, when they paid 8.2 million for each of 25 years, for a total cost of $205 million, they would own the building shell. Ms. Booker seems to think that if the city of Brampton had had just gone ahead and got a contractor to build a building at the city of Brampton's expense, it would have been $36 million cheaper. I'd like to move on to the question which was mentioned by Mr. Rustai of the other George Street property across from the liquor store. Basically, there was an option taken out on that property for $480,000. There was some puzzlement, I think even by some council members, as to who paid that money. Some people say in a council meeting that it was done by Dominus, but it turns out it was done by the city of Brampton. I think, I understand subsequently, that little square of parking lot was bought by the city of Brampton for another $2 million. So, basically, that little parking lot cost the city of Brampton $2.5 million. My third point is, I'd like to address the issue of conflict of interest. I noticed with interest that at the start of this meeting, there was a call for anybody to declare the conflict of interest. In the last month, I presented upon a private matter before the Niagara's Government Commission and the County of Dufferin Works Department. At both meetings, the meeting was started by a call for any declarations of even apparent or potential conflicts of interest, and some of the people went to great lengths, from people that were far removed from them to declare conflict of interest. I really question why Mr. Rustai accepted this assignment, given his previous job with a law firm that did work on this project. I also question whether the councillors, at the time that they voted to have Mr. Rustai do this audit, knew that he had a potential or possible conflict of interest. I'm not making accusations of conflict of interest, but I think even the possibility should have been eliminated. Another issue, there was some discussion by Mr. Rustai about the building is good, but he said he wasn't qualified to address that. When somebody buys a new house, basically, the contractor has a one-year warranty, and then there's five years of warranty from carry-on. That's a five-year span where you can see where there is, in fact, structural problems with the building, because they don't manifest them right away. So, basically, I don't know if the final approval or architect's certificate has been issued on the building, yet, and otherwise, perhaps there will be some surprises there. I note with interest that Dominus was quoted in the newspaper as saying they invented a new way of stabilizing the foundation of this building because they couldn't do the proper tiebacks under some Queen Street buildings. I think if Mr. Rustai didn't look at if this building is a good, well-constructed, and structurally sound building, somebody should, and maybe somebody removed from the Brampton Building Inspection Department.
You've exceeded your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Jeffrey and council. My name is Chris Benajar, and I'm also co-chair of Citizens for a Better Brampton. I'm just going to continue what Doug kind of started and to kind of rough all these points we want to get across tonight. So, the former CIO has stated that staff and the authority to transfer the Dominus lease agreement, and presumably, the original agreement with Dominus to the new landlord Fenngate, without ever advising council, that seems to be a real stretch, in our opinion, given that the deal with Dominus described them as "our long-term partner with the city." Did staff assume authority to, in effect, free-wheel with formal agreements, using their own best judgment? Did council even know about their new long-term partner before the deal was finalized? Shouldn't it have? The auditor general seems not to have been bothered by this extraordinary assumption of power by staff. By the same token, staff along with the previous mayor agreed to cap the penalty fees for Dominus for missing important delivery dates. Shouldn't that have been a council decision as well? Had substantial completion been reached last summer and certified by the architect when Dominus decided to depart the project and sell their interest to Fenngate? Was the building ready for tenant occupancy with appropriate occupancy permits issued to allow tenants to occupy the space without any liabilities? There are so many questions that arise when the council and the public are not made privy to basic information which they should be entitled or be aware of. For us, the conclusions of the auditor general's report on the whole host of accounts does not stand muster. It lacks credibility, particularly so because it ignores the Booker findings that show the Dominus deal to have been far more expensive than a more traditional and transparent procurement process. A process to revitalize our Southwest Quadrant really began in 2005, that's almost a decade now. It regained momentum in the summer of 2009, and almost six years later, we don't have a project that's complete, a project that actually redeveloped the Southwest Quadrant of the downtown, a project that lacks architectural integrity, a process that didn't involve the public or elected officials, a project that was clearly way too expensive, a project that has made redevelopment of the actual Southwest Quadrant much more complex, and finally, a project that has been secretive and filled with controversy. One very important question that remains unanswered to this day: why? Why did this happen? Many of you ran for elected office on the promise to clean up City Hall, to make it more fair, open, and transparent, more accountable, and to restore business, community, and taxpayer confidence. Quite frankly, if it wasn't for the efforts of a few sitting council members, a few concerned residents and business owners, and a few members from the media, the sweeping change of voter sentiment that helped you get elected might have never even happened. In closing, I believe everyone here is familiar with the saying, "You learn from your own mistakes." So, please tell me, how can the city of Brampton move forward, become a leader, a model for accountability and transparency, if we don't even admit that any mistakes were made? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benajar. Our next speaker is Anil Kanna. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of public. My name is Anil Kanna, I'm a resident of Brampton. I'd started coming to the council meetings and speaking on issues of public interest, but then nearly shut it off because, although it was being said that the council and staff listens, but it was probably falling onto deaf ears. But with the winds of change coming in, I thought maybe I should come and voice my concerns, which are also reflected by many concerns of other citizens. First of all, Madam Mayor, if a person is speaking and coming up with matters which may require higher time, I think we should not shut them off by showing five minutes' clock. We should give them extra time if somebody has got substance and can contribute towards better judgment. Second is, the council should respect the views of citizens. It's our votes and our taxes which bring you here. Why is there no transparencies, what everybody is asking? Why are being decisions made behind closed walls? And when appointing an auditor, what I understand as a layman, who should know details of all the things that are being looked into, why a upper ceiling was not set, why a time limit was not given? Even you, as elected members, have four years, and then you seek reelection. Why did the report drag for so many months, costing us $262,000? Is a question which you may like to answer. Why so many of the public associates and processes were not shown? Why things are behind closed walls? Secondly, I do hear some of the people, whether in council or staff, are no longer with the city, who were associated with this process. Does that mean that if I tomorrow do not pay my taxes for two years and shift from Brampton and, say, move to Caladan, will I be allowed to go scot-free? Or would you catch me and ask me to pay the balance money? Why a lawyer? Why not a procurement expert or a financial expert? If it was to be whitewashed, I'm sorry, sir, with due respect to you, we could have even taken a painter. $205 million with a prospect of another $500 million. Can we stop the process here and save the balance $289 million? Thank you, madam.
Our next speaker is Franco Spatafora. Take your time on the stairs.
Thank you. The one question I just basically have, and it's very straightforward, is, moving forward, what is council's plans to correct the issues and the problems that have occurred so that it doesn't happen yet another time?
Thank you. Does anybody else who'd like to come down and ask a question, make a comment? Does anybody else who'd like to come down and ask a question, make a comment? Come on down. If you could just say your name before you speak, so we can get it for the public record.
My name is Cindy Meisner, Madam Mayor, member of councils, and to all my friends in the community. I live at 6 Elizabeth Street South, and I'm speaking on behalf of my husband and my neighbors to the north. They own properties 2 and 4. There has been a lot of secrecy, and nothing has been divulged to us personally upfront by the city or by the contractor. My husband and I went to the meeting in 2011 at the hotel, and he stated just that. And I have had tried, John Sanderson tried to help, Marilyn Ball has been in my property, Michael Wong, Kyle Seaback, but I'm not getting anywhere. I would invite all of the press, and Madam Mayor, I would accompany you in my backyard at 6 Elizabeth Street to take a picture and take a look. It's not finished. It's 2015 May, and I just want my property back. You all think that, you know, it's about the City Hall, but you forgot about the little people. I am third generation. The Sproul family are fifth generation. And Ling, who owns a little dry cleaning shop on Queen Street, does not understand English very well, and I tried to help her along as former councillor Sanderson saw me there with my son trying to go over the issues that we had with Dominus. I implore everyone to give us a hand. We all along have had legal advice. We are not in a legal situation or a legal battle. And we are still in legal assistance, because we need it. We are playing with the big boys. And I would really appreciate if I could have an answer to this and some help. And Elaine Moore and councillor Spaveri have tried to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meisner.
This is a very sad story for Brampton.
Sorry, could I ask you to say your name?
Sorry, my name is Marcel Evans. Marcel Evans. And as resident for Brampton for the past X amount of years. This is a very sad occasion for the citizen of Brampton. This is a total whitewash. And I have, my wife and I, we've got two sons, several grand, and a one great-grand. Our youngest grandson is two and a half years old, Spencer. And even Spencer and I were talking about it, and he says, "Papa, that's a total whitewash." Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody.
Can you say your name for the record?
My name is Paramjit Singh Verdi. Laws haven't said. And really feel, you know, I'm really sometimes, you know, feel emotional that people are saying so much bad about our city. This is not good. We are listening to this kind of stuff from many years, and we have to stop somewhere. One thing I just got from the report, they have seen they have introduced one comparative dialogue process, which never been introduced anywhere in Canada. I never have heard about anywhere in the world. And Brampton is a special city, and the people know how to spend the money, but don't know how to save the money. That's why maybe this process has been introduced in our city. Secondly, Mr. Auditor said that the staff did a wonderful job. They did a very good job, and they follow the laws, and maybe that's why we have saved lots of money. We have spent millions of extra dollars, because the staff did a very good job. Really, I want to ask that. Next is, you know, before these elections, everybody, every politician gave us a very good dream, that we will have a better Brampton. We have accountability, we have credibility. That's what we have been served now? That's what we are getting? Please, I want to request all the elected officials, all the elected politicians, please save our dream. Please save our dream. This is going too much, and all the lies are here. I'm sorry if I use some, you know, bad word for anybody. This is all lies, but what's going on? Nobody here, who are sitting there, nobody is accepting this kind of stuff. And we are spending and spending and spending. And how much we have to pay more? How many inquiries? Please, I want to request all of you, save our dream, give us a better Brampton. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else that wants to come down? Come on down.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandeep Sanga, and I'm resident of Brampton from last 18 years. And one humble request to all elected officials and city staff, please save our tax dollars. Please save as much as you can. If we want to hear like these reports, I think we have better residents of Brampton that can get better report on every aspect. And I think these kind of committees, maybe we should elect from volunteers that already live in Brampton, they have paid what they've been through. And I think like we should make the committee for these kind of audits, like community-based committee, that should include the lawyers. Like I think we have like previous lawyers, accountants, and all those other professionals they can look after for the interest of public, nor for the interest of city or the developer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, councillors, Don McLeod, a member of community group Brampton Focus. I think for myself, as well as most of the people here, and probably most of Bramptonians, this is a disappointing report. It doesn't answer any questions. It actually creates more questions than answers. I have a few questions for Mr. Rustai. I have a few. There's a whole whack, but it's going to take more than five minutes, so I'll narrow it down to one. Mr. Rustai notes in his report that during the investigation of the southwest quadrant, he was provided by staff with a massive amount of documentation relating to council decision-making and transactions over the three-year procurement process. He states 60 binders and files of documentations, most of them substantial size and volume. I think he said three inches, and they're about this high. Very impressive. Perhaps we can intern them in the new building as a time capsule. My question is, did you personally review interdepartmental emails and correspondence between the members of the Evaluation Steering Committee and the sitting members of the council during the three-year procurement process? And if you did, what percentage of your report, your 60 binders, is based on that? If you didn't, why not? Because you stated that your principal objective was to uncover every document, piece of information that might cast a light upon the process relating to the southwest quadrant. And again, if you didn't, you absolutely did declare yourself in any conflict of interest. You reviewed the city's entire legal file, which included hundreds of emails. So if you didn't do it for this, why did you do it for that? Thank you.
Come on, welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mary Ann Allen, and I'm a resident of Brampton. People aren't going to like what I'm going to say. We needed a new building. We all know that the people that work for the city of Brampton have been cramped up in buildings that have not been sufficient for them. They've been working out of multiple, multiple locations. So I'm all for the new building that's there. If democratic process has been followed, according to what the auditor general has said, council was in on the discussions. The discussions were fair. The procurement of tenders was fair. So what I don't understand is, why are we continuing with these silly audits? Why are we continuing spending money on crap that doesn't need to be spent? To me, if you hired somebody that you trusted, and you obviously did because you hired him, he wrote a report for you, and then you still don't like it. Well, you know what? I think time has to stop. We need to move on. We need to move ahead. You've got your new building. Let's enter into that building in good faith and enough with all the spending of dollars that, you know what, as a taxpayer, I don't want to give to you anymore. And I think we need to move on.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to come down? Any other comments? Going once, gone twice? Okay, I have, thank you, everybody, really. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. We appreciate your comments, your questions, and your ideas. I have a motion from councillor Palashe, second by councillor Gibson, that the 12 delegations and the correspondent Sheila Jacobson, a Brampton resident, to council meeting of May 4th be received. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. So, members of council, the interim auditor general's report is before us. Do members have any specific questions or comments to Mr. Rustai and his report and/or staff on report item D2? And I have a list. So councillor Miles.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just actually have a couple of questions that I would like to have addressed by the experts that actually worked on this report. And the first person, if I could, direct a question to Mr. Emanuele. If he, could I ask Mr. Emanuele to come forward?
So I believe the report is to Mr. Rustai. And Mr. Rustai, you've indicated, would the questions come through you, or would they go directly to Mr. Emanuele?
Madam Mayor, I believe that directly to Mr. Emanuele would be appropriate.
Thank you. Councillor Miles?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Emanuele, there's been a lot of discussion here today about experts in the procurement process, and also about the competitive dialogue process. One of the delegations stated that he thought we should hire an expert in procurement. Would you kindly, for the sake of the audience here, just give a brief overview of your credentials and the kind of work that you've done in this field in the past?
Thank you for your question, councillor Miles. Thank you for your question, councillor Miles. I have been a, stay, okay, thank you. I've been a public procurement lawyer since the 1990s, practicing exclusively in this For over 10 years with the Ministry of the Attorney General, province of Ontario, where I practiced exclusively in the area of public procurement, advising management board secretariat, and then Crown Office of Civil, is where I concluded my practice over those 10 years, advising 20-some odd ministries in the area of public procurement at the provincial level. Since then, I established my own law firm, procurement law office, and have advised public institutions at all levels of government, from the federal government, provincial governments, agencies of our public sector across Canada, in all regions of Canada. I've also taught as an instructor at Oxford-Hall Law School since 2006, as the course director of the intensive program. And I currently teach two certificate programs as the course instructor at Oxford-Hall Law School. I've also taught with Procurement Management Association of Canada since 2006 as an instructor. Have written four books on the topic, including Government Procurement, which has been cited by multiple courts in authority, and have reviewed, in the course of my practice, over 30 years worth of case law in Canada, as well as many international sources in this area, and have been recognized by Who's Who Legal as one of the top 10 public procurement lawyers in the world. Can I stop now and get on with that?
Yeah, I think I was trying to ascertain whether or not you were an expert in the field of procurement.
I have been recognized as such, yes.
Thank you very much. Could you just talk a little bit about the competitive dialogue process? Whether it is, as has been stated, brand-new? And why, excuse me, why municipalities that are looking at this kind of process, why would they choose a competitive dialogue process over a regular RFP?
The competitive dialogue process has been mischaracterized repeatedly in the press and in comments, including today, as having somehow been novel, first time I've heard this evening in the world, in North America, in Canada. First time, wasn't even the first time it was done in Brampton, for the record. The William Osterhaus rule was built in Brampton using a competitive dialogue process. Was the subject of a public audit by the Auditor General of Canada released in 2008, and there were no criticisms of that process by the Auditor General of Ontario with respect to the use of the process.
So it's an acceptable process?
It's actually, in fact, the international standard and domestic standard for the use for these types of projects across Canada, as well as the United States, as well as across Europe and internationally. So there's a great misconception of saying it was somehow A, novel, or B, inappropriate. It was perfectly appropriate, and my advice would be that if you were to embark on another similar project, you should use the same type of procedure.
Could you also just address why a competitive dialogue process is a good type of process to be used in the kind of situation with the nine different sort of variables that council had set that they wanted in looking at building, a new building, the fact that we weren't allowed to have any taxpayer dollars, we didn't have any money in the bank, we had all different ideas about what we wanted? Could you just talk a little bit about why a competitive dialogue process, in your estimation, is a good process for us to have undertaken?
Yes, there's two different aspects. There's the financial aspect of value for money, that is an ongoing debate with respect to whether it's directly funded by taxpayers or privately financed by industry. That is a debate that will go on well beyond this particular project, and there are many competing views on the issue of the best way to finance these projects. So I won't speak to that in any detail, because there's no conclusions one way or the other in having looked at a multitude of projects, but many experts have commented on that. What I can comment on the use of the competitive dialogue specifically is a competitive vehicle, irrespective of how you pay for the project. And the use of competitive dialogue is the standard approach for more complex procurements, because you're not going to market with a prescribed fixed approach. Brampton did not enter this project, having prescribed the exact type of building it wanted. It wanted to make the design of the project and the specifics of the building part of the competition. So when you go to market with that type of project, the standard approach to do that is by way of a competitive dialogue, where each distinct proponent's unique design aspects are protected because of their proprietary rights to have their design used to evaluate just their proposal. So there's a significant distinction between your standard construction job on a simple project, which is low bid wins, where you can have absolute transparency to open up the tenders at City Hall, as opposed to a complex project like a P3, where each competitor is coming with unique design elements. And it's because of the unique design elements, the unique confidentiality, to protect the uniqueness of each proposal during the process. And that is standard internationally and domestically, because we are duty-bound as public entities to protect the confidentiality of bidder submissions in these types of procedures.
So because every bidder in the process is coming forward with a different proposal, and those proposals at that point aren't accepted by anyone, you have, the evaluation is happening, and the dialogue process is going on, that's why it's key that the confidentiality of the process is so important?
Correct. The phrase I use is watertight tunnels. Each proponent is in their own sphere of confidentiality to protect the uniqueness of their particular proposal. And in fact, if you look at the UK dialogue policies promulgated by the UK government and the New Zealand policies as well, they expressly recognize that legal duty. But that legal duty also applies in Canada, under common law, that we are duty-bound to protect the confidential elements of the competing proposals. So what Brampton did in ensuring that confidentiality was the legal standard that, as a city, they should have followed and staff should have followed. So what was done was entirely appropriate.
So what about the involvement of members of council politicians in this process? Normally, when we have an RFP, at the end of the day, staff will come, an evaluation has already been done, and council approves or not approves. So in a competitive dialogue process, how do you see the role of politicians in that? Or do you?
As a standard proposition, there should be no political involvement in this. As a standard proposition, there should be no political involvement in decision-making for the award of a government contract. The delegation of authorities should be delegated to staff to conduct an independent arms-length process to select the preferred proponent based on the transparent criteria established in the procurement process.
Why?
Because of the need to defend the integrity of the process from politicization and lobbying, as the core reason. And we've had the Bellamy Inquiry that extensively commented in an analysis of procurement practices in the municipal sector in Ontario, finding that there was a rampant politicization in the municipal sector to the public peril that undermined the integrity of the process. And you can look at what's happening at the back with the Charbonneau Commission, if you think your investigation here has gone over time, for an investigation that's truly gone over time, because of the corrosive effect of politicization and political interference in public procurement, as just another example.
Are you inferring that members of council would be impacted by lobbying?
I would say that is standard, recognized feature of public procurement, that that is one of the risks of high-profile projects, and it's in the best interest of elected officials to ensure there's a neutral arms-length administrative process to select, on the merits of the RFP, the selected prospective awardee of a contract. And that is standard best practice, and legally required from the standpoint of protecting the public interest.
Okay. So, just the final question in regards to that. Mr. Rusty had embarked on this process, had been at it for, for many months, when the decision was made to involve you in the, taking a look at the process as a procurement expert. And could you just briefly, I think it's important that, that the public that are here today understand what role you played in looking at this, because you are a procurement expert?
There were three specific discrete issues that we were asked to look into and analyze within the far broader analysis that Mr. Rusty has conducted in, in his gathering and assessment of information. The appropriateness of the use of competitive dialogue RFP, for which we concluded, as I've already stated, that it was the appropriate vehicle for this type of competition, and is standard practice in public procurement for these types of complex procurements, number one. Number two, the, the concern over undue secrecy in the process, which I've also already summarized, that that confidentiality protocol that was established was a requirement of law, and was appropriately implemented in the process, as well as the third, with respect to the details of the disqualification of a particular proponent for failing to sign a non-disclosure.
When you say requirement of law, what do you mean by that?
The requirement of law is there's the duty to protect confidential business information of proponents under common law. The governing case is Ferent, and the government of Alberta. The case dealt with specifics of the construction of this Calgary ski hill before the Calgary Winter Olympics. The government was found to have misappropriated bidder information, used that information, gave it to other proponents, and awarded a contract to a different proponent, and they were found liable for breach of confidence. And that's an example, leading case, that's an example of the fact that we are duty-bound as public entities to protect the confidential proprietary business information of bidders when they submit bids, not just in a competitive dialogue, but in any RFP process. That is the default duty to protect confidential information. And that duty has to then be balanced against the duty of transparency in the event of public access requests, litigation, and briefings to council. So, it's a complex area that needs to be carefully handled, and councils are well-advised to, to listen to the advice of their lawyers and staff when it comes to managing that delicate balancing act between transparency on one hand, and confidentiality on the other.
So, with the delicate balance that you talked about, when you looked at the process that we went through, did you feel that that delicate balance was protected by the process and the staff that were doing the evaluation?
Yes, I think the mechanisms that were put in place were standard and entirely appropriate from the standpoint of protecting confidentiality in the process. I reviewed the non-disclosure agreement in question more than once. There was nothing out of the ordinary in that confidentiality covenant that was expected of all proponents to sign. It was perfectly appropriate for the circumstances.
Okay. Thank you very much for your answer. Could I ask one question, Madam Mayor, through you to Mr. Rusty? Mr. Rusty, unfortunately, a number of the delegations that have come forward have cast, I think, some sort of cloud over whether or not you were, you had a conflict of interest on this particular issue, which you have dealt with in your, in your report, and whether or not you wrote a shallow report based on comments from our staff. I just, I, first, can you deal with the conflict of interest issue first?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I have, the last time I appeared before the council, Counselor Sproveri asked me questions dealing with this issue, and I felt it appropriate to, first of all, go back to my previous law firm, Weir Folds, which, early in the process, did give legal advice to the city with respect to the commencement of the, the RFP process. The, my former firm of Weir Folds, which I left over two years ago, did provide advice to the city with respect to this matter when I was a member of the firm, and I was head of the municipal section of the firm at, at the time. And when Counselor Sproveri first asked me if I was involved, I said I didn't remember. That is because quite often, in view of my municipal expertise, and I'm a certified specialist in municipal law, my, my partners and colleagues at Weir Folds would, from time to time, come into my office and say, oh, we've got a matter here, where a municipality wants to build a city hall, or an annex to a city hall, and they want advice on the, on the, on the process to follow, or the, the legal authority under which they'd be acting. And I might, I might well, off the top of my head, just give some advice that might be incorporated into the report. In this case, I have checked into the matter, and Weir Folds has confirmed this in writing to the city, and to me, to say that I had no involvement whatsoever in any matter involving the city of Brampton or this particular project. Consequently, for that reason, and, and certainly the firm has, has long since departed the scene as far as giving advice to the city on this matter, I am totally confident, 100%, that I was not involved in the process, and I have no conflict of interest at all, which would in any way inhibit me from conducting a proper investigation.
And did you feel that you had any bias at all when you came into this project?
Through you, Madam Mayor, no. I have tended, over the years, and in my private practice, to act almost entirely on behalf of municipalities and members of municipal councils, and in some cases, candidates for municipal office. So, I do have a predilection of, of being interested in and supporting what municipalities do, and the functions of municipal corporations. If, if that in itself creates a bias in favor of the city, so be it. I, I don't have a bias in favor of the city, and I went into this investigation with a totally open mind in every way. I had no knowledge of the, of the transactions that led to it. When Mr. Corbett approached me to say, would you be prepared to be appointed auditor general to do an investigation, I said, yes, I'd be happy to. Now, I was not provided either by Mr. Corbett, or in the council authority which appointed me, with specific issues to be addressed. Nor, by the way, did I give any prediction as to how long the investigation would take. I, I couldn't possibly tell at that point, and as it turned out, the investigation ballooned as I, as I went along. But I, I was not involved in any previous matter involving this, and I don't think that I had any bias whatsoever. I, when I was appointed, I immediately reviewed press clippings, insofar as what people had been saying. I talked to some members of the city staff, and I don't apologize for that, it's the city staff who, who were involved and produced to me all, all of the documentation. And I am satisfied that I, that I had no bias in the investigation. I approached it with an open mind. I'm a strong believer in documentation as being the, the one piece of objective material which can support or not support what people say orally, or what is said in council, or reports that go to council. And I am satisfied that every one of my requests for information and material was satisfied by Mr. Corbett and Mr. Palladini. I believe that I asked for every single document that the city had that was relevant to the project. I do have this massive material, which I've, I've gone through. Now, as far as emails, internal emails, I'm not sure, first of all, that the city had all of those emails, or that I necessarily received every, every possible email. I asked for and was given all of the legal files of the city, and files dealing with outside counsel to the, to the city, and I believe that I had all of their internal emails. But aside from that, I, I can't say that I had every single email that was relevant. But no, I, I don't believe that, that I was biased. I believe that I produced a fair and balanced report. I anticipated that people might say whitewash, that they would say, well, you just supported what the city did. Well, I didn't. I, I looked very, very hard for any sort of, even the slightest suggestion from anyone that there was a bias in the process, that there was favoritism, that there was undue influence. People were suggesting maybe the previous mayor was involved because she'd received campaign contributions. There were suggestions that there was undue influence, suggestion that staff had intentionally misled council. Well, first of all, in view of the documentation, I don't think that an individual could have skewed the process for personal gain. It wasn't that kind of a process. It was a process built on documenting every single part of the transaction, minutes of meetings, a lot of emails, a lot of letters back and forth, a lot of reports to council. Excuse me. And I am satisfied that had there been any evidence whatsoever of corruption or undue influence, or misleading of council, it would have turned up, and I was looking for it, but I didn't find any.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Fortini.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Mr. Rusty, and my questions will be simple. How come it took eight months to do this report?
I was approached, oh, sorry.
Sorry. I'll ask you a couple of questions, because I remember when I was sitting up, up there, you said it would take about two months if it should have been done before the election, and how they get to $170,000, because I remember hearing it was going to cost 50,000 to 70,000. So, and.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I, I believe that the, the only estimate of time came from Mr. Corbett. At the time when I was first brought into the matter, and, and Mr. Corbett did approach me, of course, before recommending to council that it established the position of auditor general and mandated an investigation, at that time, I could not have predicted how long it would take. Now, I also could not have predicted how much material and information there was available on this study. The council mandated me to review the process and administration of the, of the Southwest Quadrant project. I took that to be a mandate for me to delve into every issue, and every piece of fact, and every communication that was relevant to the matter, both at the staff level and in staff reporting to the council. And I did that. While I, I had an office here in, in City Hall, which was for the first three months, every day, new material would arrive, and I, I had stacks and stacks of it sitting in my office upstairs. I worked basically full-time, all of my working time, through September, October, November, and part of December on the investigation. Now, I started drafting a report, and I started trying to cope with the issue of trying to compare the financial aspects of the deal, because I, I realized pretty quickly doing that, that I didn't have the necessary expertise, and I conveyed that to, to Mr. Corbett. In the middle of January, the, Mr. Corbett, or, and I'm not sure if council was involved in, in the selection or appointment process, advised me of the, the need for expertise in the procurement area, and in the financial area, and the names of Ms. Booker and Mr. Emanuele came from the, the city, and they were duly retained. Now, there was a period of time there, a couple of months, where I was involved still in reviewing the material that I had, but doing substantially less work, because I was waiting for the, the experts' reports to come. They both came in early April. And since, since the beginning of April, after receiving and reviewing those reports, I've been involved in making the necessary amendments to my draft report. The, the key, what I consider the most important paragraphs from both the reports of Mr. Booker, Ms. Booker, and Mr. Emanuele, I have reported verbatim in my report, because, once again, I, I didn't want to comment on their areas of expertise, and I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of all of their input. I did correspond with Mr. Patterson with respect to their reports, and he provided me some feedback with respect to his comments on their comments, and I also incorporated that in, in the report. And that has taken me, or did take me, most of the month of, of April to, to complete. Believe it or not, I tried as much as possible to minimize the amount of work that I was doing. Now, there's been criticism of the amount of my accounts. I am not billing as a municipal lawyer. I'm a 40-year municipal lawyer, but I'm billing about half of what I would bill if I were providing legal services to the city. And there it is. I believe that the, the time I have spent, I have not wasted any time. I have tried to take the shortest possible route to obtaining information, and in reviewing it. But reviewing masses of documentation in a very, very detailed, comprehensive transaction takes a lot of time. And I have spent most of my working time, as I've described, from, from September of last year until now, working on this matter.
Thank you. What bothers me the most is, this was done in September 2014, and I remember me sitting there, and, and when we get articles in the, in the paper of this mayor and this council is wasting our tax money, which was done from September of 2014, it gets kind of annoying. And I have to agree with the audience. I'm not too, I'm not an auditor, or I'm not a lawyer, but reading these reports like me, doing an audit on my brother.
Pardon me?
So, I have to agree with them.
I didn't catch that last.
Counselor Fortini, they didn't hear your closing comments.
I have to agree with what the public sees. Having a report like this doesn't really show much, it doesn't say much.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Moore.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any questions of the auditor, but I do have some comments to make, and they're significant. I'll work through them as quickly as I can, but I do feel they're all important to make. I have read and reread this report several times, and I keep asking why the author would think it's okay to produce this document at an alarming cost, which fails to answer the fundamental questions that taxpayers wanted to know. Perhaps through the eyes of a lawyer, this is acceptable. But through the eyes of Brampton taxpayers, it's insulting, and it doesn't come close to clearing the air, to use the words of the author. But this wasn't an exercise in clearing the air. It was an exercise to seek the truth, which remains elusive even after spending $269,000 for this report. The author claims to have turned over every stone and read through 60 binders of information, and for some inexplicable reason, chose a course of action that produced this report, which relied so heavily on those who were directly involved in recommending the competitive dialogue process to council, that he had to be instructed by the former CAO Corbett at the end of January of this year to retain outside financial and procurement consultants, with the only objective consultant retained was the financial consultant, Fay Booker. Even the procurement consultant relied on in the report, Mr. Emanuele, is retained by the, was retained by the author, and has done a great deal of work in the past and presently for the city of Brampton. The report contains heavily fragmented information, cut and paste from The report contains heavily fragmented information, cut and paste from staff reports and media stories, draws conclusions where evidence doesn't exist, ignores conclusions where evidence does exist, and for which he had full access to. I met with the author for over three and a half hours, just a few short weeks after he was appointed, and I have to tell you that I was impressed. He had read all the court documents at that point. He had read the transcripts of the council meetings and some of the staff reports that had been provided, and he impressed me with the amount of homework that he'd done. He showed some initial reaction to what he had read, and I recall thinking that this guy really gets it. And my parting words to him, and I don't know whether he remembers, but I do, I said, "If you can't trust the Auditor General, who can you trust?" Well, since reading the report last Monday, I've eaten those words a thousand times. I now realize that my meeting with the author was to determine what information and documentation I had or was aware of, and it was never about seeking answers to my concerns. Getting to the truth and protecting our taxpayers was placed a distant second to justifying the actions of staff. The content of this report is evidence of this. There is no substantiating of staff's rebuttal responses to Booker's findings throughout the document. There is no explanation of why Booker wasn't permitted to scrutinize the staff responses. So the staff responses remained unchallenged on everything. The author does not question the actions of staff hiding behind the protective shield of the competitive dialogue, on the withholding of information and details from council and the public, like the fact that the Morguard proposal included an extra 30,000 square feet, which was a library. I kind of think this was important information that council and the taxpayers had a right to know. How was this considered proprietary information? It absolutely, completely escapes me. The lawsuit is used as an excuse for not addressing or delving deeper into some of the serious concerns raised by counselors. The author mistakenly believes that there were members of council who wanted to be part of the evaluation team, a conclusion not supported by any of the evidence. He accepts the truthfulness of the information provided by staff, even when there was an acknowledgment of inaccuracies, and evidence that proves council had been misled. He acknowledges and recognizes that he was not delegated to conduct an exhaustive inquiry into the conduct of members of council, but concludes that our role in the process was appropriate. I'm going to bring everyone's attention to the evidence that is available, and was available to the author, but for which was completely ignored and explained away by staff. I have raised questions about whether or not McKeller prepared the letters to council, as there are court documents and emails between McKeller and staff suggesting that staff prepared the letter on behalf of the independent fairness advisor, McKeller, and for his signature. In fact, one email is asking a number of email recipients if they had anything they wanted to add to the letter. This was supposed to be an independent fairness advisor, so why were staff working on the letter to council? If the role of the fairness advisor was to supplant council's oversight, shouldn't council have made the decision of who would be the fairness advisor? Why was it necessary to keep the identity of the fairness advisor a big secret until the report came to council in March of 2011? The RFP documents also make it clear that there would be no lobbying by staff, yet once again, there is an email evidence between staff that they would be seeking advice from Counselor Miles, on which counselors they should talk to. The author identifies that minutes of meetings do not specifically show direction to staff, but likewise, do not show any concern with what was presented, and accepts staff's response that "we deemed that this was being accepting of what we had presented, and staff proceeding with action that had not been specifically approved or directed by council." There was no challenge or opinion on the matter of staff assuming that they had direction to proceed. On the confidentiality agreement, staff advised the author that "we didn't feel it was necessary to go back to council for approval." This is at the very heart of the issue. How many decisions did staff make that they didn't feel they needed to come back to council for approval? Even Emanuele's School of Procurement, which, by the way, only works if staff are doing their job, acknowledges that there is a role for political oversight. Emanuele's whole philosophy is that staff should be entrusted to execute everything perfectly, which we all know they didn't do in the Bellamy Inquiry, while the responsibility for what they do lies entirely on the shoulders of politicians. The author fails to answer the question of how up to $8.2 million suddenly got changed in subsequent reports to a fixed $8.2 million. Booker picks up on the fact that Dominus corrects their bid from $94 million to $91 million in an email to staff. This information was derived from an email Dominus sent to staff correcting their bid amount. Staff deemed this to be irrelevant, and continued in every report and every calculation to use the $94 million. In sworn testimony, staff confirmed that Dominus had communicated to the financial team a correction of the $94 million to $91 million, and staff further confirmed that this is information that was never communicated to council. This is one of the examples where the author of this report ignored the concerns expressed by counselors, instead, accepting a staff response that doesn't even answer the question. I guess what's $3 million between friends? The author accepts the staff's explanation that the construction cost is irrelevant because we were only concerned with the lease payment, which went from up to $8.2 to a fixed $8.2. Booker, once again, isn't given the opportunity to scrutinize the response from staff. The author relies on a letter attached to a staff report in March of 2011 from Deloitte that a costing analysis had been performed. And I have a copy of the letter here with me. It's addressed to the steering committee, care of Julian Patterson. It relies on information from Dominus, and financing costs and other assumptions from the city of Brampton. The letter states it did not audit the material provided, and the best part, it's not even signed. It doesn't even say who the author is on the letter. Somebody has neatly written in "Deloitte and Touche." Don't you think that the Auditor General, who is relying on this letter as evidence, might want to find out who the author of the letter was and might want to speak to them? There is no evidence that this ever happened. Further, I had an email exchange with staff seeking clarification on the square footage costs he had reported here in the chambers during the public meeting. Staff responds that the numbers were validated by Atlas, Deloitte, and the city's in-house quantity surveyor. The author accepts staff's response that an independent cost analysis had been done, when in the sworn testimony, staff acknowledges that neither Deloitte, Atlas, or an in-house quantity surveyor had done an analysis. In fact, the question posed to staff was, was there any validating of any of the numbers, or in particular, the cost per square foot by Atlas, Deloitte, or the in-house quantity surveyor?
Counselor Moore.
I'm sorry.
I know, but we have lawyers that would like to comment on this being—
Madam Mayor, through your—
I want to order in the council chambers.
I am referring to public documents. They are available to anybody in these chambers who wishes to visit the courthouse and obtain a copy of them.
They are public documents, but discussion concerning the litigation in this sworn testimony is properly reserved for in camera session, unless council makes a determination otherwise. It is not for an individual counselor—
I will take that under advisement, Mr. Squires. I think people get the fact that the bottom line is that the response I received from staff was misleading. Booker also points out discrepancies in the square footage is used, problems with the financial evaluation based on assumptions, the evaluation of the Morguard proposal, inaccuracies of the scoring and awarding of points. And staff acknowledges that there were inconsistencies in the report. Booker does not see any reason why staff would rely on a subjective evaluation of a financial plan. She says the financial plan should have entailed a means of financing, cost of financing, duration of financing, and the provider of the financing, and that those should all be able to be evaluated objectively. Further, Booker says that respondents should have been required to provide the necessary information to eliminate the need for an assumption to be used in the evaluation process. On every issue, staff provided a contrary opinion. And once again, the author accepts the response from staff without giving Booker an opportunity to scrutinize and respond. McKeller, the fairness advisor, was opposed to the appointment of one or more members of council. Well, nobody ever asked to be on the evaluation team. He says—but McKeller goes on to say that "if you're there, you're responsible." Well, again, I said, "We weren't there, but we are responsible. We were responsible then, and we are responsible now." Mr. Emanuele, the procurement consultant of record for the city of Brampton, his invoice for his share of this report is $32,000. The comments in this report don't seem any different from what Mr. Emanuele had shared with council at workshops, including our most recent one. Mr. Emanuele fails to explain the difference between political interference and seeking clarification and understanding. And notwithstanding staff's rule, the outcome was political. There was absolutely no other way to proceed on a project like this. One counselor in an email to the mayor says she doesn't support the project at all, but she'll support the recommendation to keep other members of council from having their way. I would say that's pretty political. On page 50 of this report, the author notes that staff responded to questions over a six-hour period, and the only quote he includes in the report is that "some members," in quotations, "were very satisfied with the proposal, which," in quotations, "would be very beneficial to downtown revitalization and private sector involvement." Why didn't he include my quote? "This is our taxpayers paying for this. We need to be absolutely sure that we are asking them to pay for something that's giving them the best value. And I don't think that sitting here this evening, answering our questions, is getting us the kinds of answers and the depth of understanding in order for us or the taxpayer to make an informed decision." On the George Street acquisition, the author says whether or not council specifically pre-authorized the initial option payment of $480,000, by since acquiring the property in November of 2014, three years later, we have—this is beautiful—retroactively ratified the decisions of staff. Well, this was not ever supposed to be a staff decision. This was a council decision, and it was never approved. He has taken the no-harm, no-foul position on this serious breach on the part of staff. The author of this report completely fails to address this issue. In this case, staff blatantly lied in public in these chambers on this matter in March, and again in April, and August of 2011. The author has the transcript of both these meetings. They are verbatim transcript, and he knows that staff lied, but has instead suggested that this is really no big deal, no harm, no foul. The evidence is clear on the 20 George Street North. Staff had no authority to enter into a lease option for the property with the owner or with Dominus. Staff had no authority to write the check for $480,000. The recommendations contained in the August 10 report were specific to Phases I and I A of the project. The confirming bylaw does not reflect the decision approved by council on August the 10th. No authority was ever given for the mayor, who, by the way, was the biggest proponent of this project, and biggest supporter of Dominus, and probably the most active lobbyist for support on it, but the former mayor and staff were never given permission to enter into an option for this property, or a nominee agreement for the property related to any part of the project beyond Phases I and I A. Council's not in the habit of approving undisclosed amounts of money, a slush fund for cutting checks without council's approval or knowledge, which means taxpayers were unaware of this, and would be today if it were not for the information that had come out during the lawsuit. If staff believed they weren't doing anything wrong, why didn't they report back to council? Why did they keep it a secret? There's no opinion offered on whether or not this action on the part of staff was bonusing under the Municipal Act, something municipalities are not allowed to do. The author of this report, a municipal expert—I expected—with him being a municipal expert, I expected the matter of bonusing to be addressed in the report. Taxpayers expected this to be addressed. Hiding this land option from council is alarming, once again, because it raises the question about what staff were doing and what they were not reporting back to council on. The report contains several instances where staff felt it unimportant or unnecessary to come back to council for approval. The author concludes that essentially, council approved or delegated to staff the authority to acquire the property. Essentially. What exactly does that mean in the context of a $480,000 check? Staff didn't mislead council, they lied to council. And so did our external lawyer, when he stood right here in these council chambers in public and told us that Dominus had—
Counselor Moore.
I'm on the home stretch.
I think you need to be careful about the language you use. You're making our legal counsel—
Well, it's on a matter of public record. It's part of the transcript.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just telling you that our legal counsel will want to step in if I don't remind you. Thank you.
I will move to the next point.
Thank you.
The author does some drive-by commentary about the contributions to the former mayor's reelection campaign, deferring to the decision of our former integrity commissioner, and for which it became known that the former mayor had misled the integrity commissioner as it related to tens of thousands of taxpayers' dollars that went into her private fundraising. But for some reason, the author of this report decides it's not important enough to investigate the fact that Dominus contributed to the former mayor's private fundraising initiatives during the time of the active RFP and beyond. And he also doesn't address at which point Dominus became a platinum sponsor of Brampton Safe City with political ties to this council. Item K7 entitled "Influence" in the RFP document prohibits respondents from offering or giving any gratuity in the form of entertainment, social events, gifts, directly or indirectly, or which may reasonably be perceived as influencing. And finally, I've saved my personal favorite until last. The author of the report asks our staff member if he is satisfied that the city obtained value for money in this transaction. And he accepts the response from staff that Dominus and their solicitors think we did better than that. In their view, the outcome was favorable to the city. Seriously. I'm going to put this in legal terms, since it was a lawyer who wrote this. You're sitting in divorce court, and your wife's lawyer comes over to you and says, "You know, I know you lost the house and the cottage, and your alimony is going to be—in the dog—the alimony is going to be a little bit more than what you planned on, and you're not going to see the kids as often as you'd like to." But you know what? I've been doing divorces for a long time, thousands of them, and you got an unbelievable deal. Well, we didn't get an unbelievable deal, and it's ridiculous to ask the seller, or to—the person being paid, if they got a good deal. This is just ridiculous. Fay Booker was the best $13,000 this city ever spent. She was truly the only objective contributor to the report, yet the author dismisses her findings. Numbers don't lie, and Ms. Booker has laid out the numbers in a clear, concise manner, and in a way that taxpayers understand. The question of whether or not taxpayers got a good deal is answered in Ms. Booker's analysis. Whether it was on square footage inaccuracies, lease payment calculations, build-to-own versus lease-to-own, financing rates or financing terms, the answer is pretty clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. I have four more speakers, so it's going to be a long night. Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How do you follow that? I don't know. But I've got some—just some questions.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm being interrupted here. We're going to go through the speakers. Counselor Miles first.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to just follow up the same sort of line of questioning as Counselor Fortini did. Being a businessperson, the dollar is absolutely important, whether it's $1, whether it's $100,000. It's these people's dollars that we're spending, and I think we have to be very, very critical of every dollar we spend. So my question, Mr. Rustai, is did you view the tape of the city council meeting that led up to you being appointed to this position?
Through you—whoops. Sorry.
Wow, that was a quick change.
I do have a transcript of it, which I did review.
Okay, so you were aware that at that meeting, council was told it was in the area of $50,000 to $60,000?
I don't remember the details.
Okay, now, just—I—
All I can say is I, myself, did not make a prediction as to how long the investigation would take. I could not have at that point.
Okay, that's fair. This council has continually asked since—well, probably since our very first meeting—about the report, when the report would come to council. about the report, when the report would come to council, and how much the report was going to be. And it was very, very difficult to get any numbers from anybody. In fact, when the number came out, I guess it was two days ago, the total number of $269,000, I think it caught all of us off guard. I think it caught everybody in the public off guard. Was there no way of letting anybody know incrementally how much this was going to cost us at the end of each month? Could you not have come to us and said, "I'm still not finished. We're billing $50,000 for the next two months"?
First of all, I did submit accounts at the beginning of each month for the previous month. So the council, and I don't know if the amount of my accounts were passed on to the council in each case, but the amount of the cost to date was known by the city shortly after the end of each month, up until that time. I agree that the investigation was far longer than I or I'm sure the council would have expected. It was the mass of documentation, and while I did correspond and communicated with city staff, particularly Mr. Patterson, lawyers frequently, I didn't rely on oral information or any information that I received from them as individuals. It's the documentation, all of which is available and can be reviewed by anyone else who wants to review it. It was the documentation, which is objective, which to me was the actual information and provided the actual evidence of what happened.
Okay, no, I'm just talking about the cost right now. So, excuse me, I'm going to cut you off there, because I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, probably all of us here have written reports in our lifetime. There's a standard structure for writing reports. You have a reason for the report. You look for the sources that are going to cover every single aspect for the reasons for your report. Then you have your structure, you put together your structure, and you do your findings. And you cross-reference your findings to your sources to see if you've covered all your bases. And you've said it yourself that you weren't an expert in procurement, you weren't an expert in the finance part of it. And just let me read to you from page 11 of the report. It says, "I reported on the fact on January 25th, I'd been advised by the Office of the Chief Administrative Officer of intention to retain external consultants." You want to say, "That decision of the CAO would add additional time to the completion of my investigation, as well as substantially improve its content and the assistance it would provide to council." You also say, if I can just indulge you for another minute here, that the procurement officer, this is on page 2 of the report, "The procurement officer, Paul Emanuele, procurement law office referred to in this report as Emanuele, and Booker and associates Fay Booker referred to in this report as Booker. This report draws heavily upon the impressive procurement and financial knowledge and expertise, respectively, of each of them, and contains numerous quotations from their reports." To my way of thinking, if you're doing a report and you've been set with a fairly high price tag to do the report, I would have thought that those two sources should have come up in your very first week here of looking at what you're doing, who you need to cover off all the bases. And I'm just wondering if we had looked at this with a critical eye, a month into, a month in, two months in, would this report have been contracted in any way and saved everybody here a couple of hundred thousand dollars? I'm just going to leave that as a comment. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Rusty for the report. I actually had come prepared, asked with six pages of questions, Madam Mayor. All documented, all labeled with backup information and evidence. But because a lot of this crosses over into the lawsuit material of an issue, I will not ask any questions. But I will make, I do have a prepared statement to make about my, about this Mr. Rusty's report. I have to say that the report has raised more questions than has provided answers to the sole matter. It's even more cloudy, and we need to have, you know, a proper review of this whole matter. And I know you have a motion, and I have a backup motion that I also want to present, Madam Mayor. Just before I do go on to my issue, I'd like to, I've been asked by a constituent, a very outraged constituent, who has been in the accounting field for 35 years and has been following this whole matter very, very closely. I think all of you have received the email that I was asked to submit this by resident Sheila Jacobson. And I just want to read this for the benefit of the public. Sheila says, "I worked for some 35 years in accounting and finance, as well as in politics at the federal level." And she's been retired for the last two years. She states, "I worked as an auditor for a reputable CA firm for years, both here in Toronto as well as in Montreal. I had also worked for a real estate law firm in Toronto in the accounting and finance division of the firm. Back in the late 1980s, I worked as a project accountant for a major land developer and builder in Toronto, which brought me into close contact with the procurement and purchasing department of the company." She states that in particular, "I would like to address the denial of any conflict of interest by Mr. George Rusty in connection with his audit report. As he is a lawyer and was a partner with Wiering Folds, law firm in Toronto, which also handled the paperwork for the Southwest Quadrant Project City Hall Expansion by Dominus and Deloitte involvement. Partners and staff in law firms and accounting firms regularly consult with others around the office regarding client cases." Exactly Mr. Rusty's comments earlier, how lawyers pop in and ask for information or advice. So Ms. Jacobson has, she knows, she has a right based on Mr. Rusty's comments. And partners in these firms often collude over indirectly related cases, files to come up with results. For all clients involved, that would be optimal for the firm. So just working in the same office as the other partner or staff of a firm puts everyone in that office environment in a conflict of interest position in relation to client case file information. Mr. George D. Rusty was a partner and municipal procurement expert at the Toronto law firm at Wiering Folds at the time that the procurement work for the City Hall Expansion was underway in 2011. Procurement in real estate projects are a very complex team effort, involving client or city staff, the firm's partners and their staff, professional experts and others, and therefore, I cannot believe that George Rusty had no involvement with a team that produced the procurement document for the City Hall project. Now, to get to my, to get to my statement, Madam Mayor. And I actually, I just read it as Counselor Moore has done. A lot of these things are probably a repeat of what Counselor Moore has said, but probably in a different tone and different view. But I'm sure that they're all pretty well related in the same manner. So, Madam Mayor and members of council, in September 2014, Mr. Rusty was hired by the city and mandated by council to do an in-depth investigation of staff's decisions that resulted in an extremely expensive project and unprecedented $28.5 million lawsuit against the city of Brampton. Everybody knows that. It's just public information. But that's a fact. That's that we have a very expensive project and a very expensive lawsuit. Instead, in my view, this report represented, presented to council is a useless and grossly expensive historic account taken from the staff reports that dealt with the Southwest project. Considering the $50,000 to $60,000 estimate given to council by the former CAO in September 2014, the total price of $269,000 of Mr. Rusty is charging the city is more like highway robbery than a fair wage for the work performed. Although the author of the report acknowledges that he did not do an in-depth investigation of what transpired with this project, the report has confirmed two facts, that Mr. Rusty has proven me to be correct in my prediction. As you may recall, back in February, when the information came out that Mr. Rusty was the procurement, a partner with Wiering Folds, and he was the municipal procurement expert. At that time, I predicted that we would get a whitewashed report. And so, Mr. Rusty, you proved me right. The other fact is that the confirmation by Ms. Booker that the competitive dialogue process used for the Southwest Quadrant has cost the city of Brampton taxpayers tens of million dollars too much. In her report, Ms. Booker has confirmed that the city would have been better served by the traditional tendering process and could have saved the city and the taxpayers millions of dollars. Although Mr. Rusty has taken seven months to produce this report, he acknowledges that he did not dig in to uncover what transpired due to not having enough time, or it was not in his mandate to investigate staff and members of council. Mr. Rusty did not even touch on the most important question. Why have the Brampton taxpayers been left with a debt for the Southwest Quadrant Project that is between $80 to $100 million too much? Never even touched on that. And that's, all that information's in the, it's all in the documents that he must have reviewed. That's all, it's all in there, and he makes no mention of it. According to this report, Mr. Rusty conclusions of the investigation, sorry, Mr. Rusty conclusions of the investigation, his findings are solely based on staff's input, that they did everything according to the city policy or delegated authority. Mr. Rusty's comments says that the city was well-served by its staff, is based on staff's own judgment of their performance. I would compare Mr. Rusty's investigation method the same as asking a suspected bank robber to admit to his crime before the judge. Madam Mayor and members of council, last year in September or October, I was interviewed by Mr. Rusty, and I provided him with a number of questions and information material, a whole binder, actually. And I'm set to say that none of those questions have been addressed in depth in this report, and I will not repeat my questions to him again, but I will raise all my questions for the record. So, point first, number one. Mr. Emanuele talks about the risk of politicization to the contract award. Well, you know, according to emails, and some are my own, that I had between myself and the former mayor, and some have come out in the core documents, which are public, but I will not refer to them, but I will refer to my own email between myself and the former mayor, if that's okay? So I will skip, I will skip the ones that I should not, I'll respect staff's advice. And I will go to the one that was between myself and the former mayor. And here's what, I'll read, and it's this email that involved me, and I was copied on. It, it says, she, the mayor sends me an email and asks me, "Have I read the report? The report for the August 10, 2011 report that was coming before council?" And, and she says to me, "John, Sanderson is making his move. Please confirm you are not supporting any deferral and are, you are supporting the report. I have heard from Gail, Sandra, Vicki, and Paul. Please let me know. Stress is unhealthy." Smiles. So, I responded, and I said...
Madam Mayor, I'm wondering if I might interrupt and ask if the clerk might consider whether this is speaking to a matter on the agenda. No, we're sorry.
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I guess for some context, I'm not quite sure what email in terms of the date. It sounds like it's from August 2011 that the council is referring to, but unfortunately, none of the other members of council have that email that he's referring to, or staff, or members of the public to confirm what he's commenting on. If he relates his remarks to the process, i.e. the August 10, 2011 decision point, then presumably it is within scope. But if he starts to venture into territory with respect to the ongoing litigation and motives, then that's out of scope for tonight's agenda.
As I said, I have a whole pile of emails, Madam Mayor, that I will not, I got through the core documents, and I will not make references.
Maybe you could just keep going.
Certainly.
Tie it together.
So the mayor, I said, "Hi, Susan. I have not yet read the report. I want to be sure that the per-square-foot price is in line with industry standards. As you may recall, when we dealt with this report back in the spring, which was March, a lot of discussion on the price occurred, and I hope the staff have addressed the issue in the report." And the mayor responds, "They sure have. I know you will be pleased with the value for money." So, this was on the Friday. On the Sunday, which was actually Monday, August, sorry, on August 5, I sent the mayor an email. I said, "Hi, Susan. I have read the report, and I have not been left with a good feeling about that we have a good deal proposed. To further my concern, the report indicates that Dominus, that Dominus does not want to disclose the per-square-foot price of the project. I have done a quick calculation based on the industry standard, cost of the class, of a Class A office building, based on $222.20 per square foot at 148,586 square feet, and have also calculated 446 parking stalls at 40,000 square foot, per, sorry, per stall, which was the going price today."
which was the going price of today, and I come up with a price of roughly $50.84 million. Can you ask staff to do an in-house calculation to build the project based on industry standards, and perhaps also provide council with recent office projects in other municipalities to give council some comparison idea?" So, the mayor sends a message to the city manager, former city manager, says, "High alert! High alert!" And it says, "Spoevery is asking questions about the price." And she says, "Oh, I got it." And then says, "Sorry, I didn't see you were all copied. At least it did not go to all members of council."
If I might, Madam Mayor, so, my question is, in what manner does this relate to the report of the Auditor General?
Well, Madam Mayor, I can answer that.
So, Mr. Spoevery, I'm going to ask that you cut to the chase on this question, because you said you had more, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the reason I'm raising this is because it's, this is evidence that the former mayor was involved in pretty well lobbying members of council to support the deal. That's what it's all about, that former mayor was lobbying members of council to support the deal. And Mr. Rusty I, or Mr. Manuali, he didn't see that. It's all was provided to you in all those core documents that you must have read, especially you, Mr. Rusty I. There's no mention of this in your report. Then, we go to the setback of the building. The setback of the building that the, and I got this from the tender document, which is public information, required at the tender, the RFP required at the, at the urban, the study that was done for the downtown, which required a four-foot setback from the property line. That was a requirement the RFP documents was not adhered to. The, and that's probably my biggest beef. It's probably what's caused this, this project to be a white elephant, in my opinion. I, the other day, I watched a go-bus go by, and he could hardly make the right-hand turn. You had to back up and come around. It's like, reminded me of when I was in, in the Amalfi Coast. I don't know if anybody's ever been there, but I tell you, your hair sticks up when you go around those bends and tight roads. So, so, so there's, so that's, you know, that was a concern that was not raised, that was not addressed by Mr. Rusty I about the RFP document. We realize that staff used its delegated authority to, to use the public spaces bylaw that allows zero setbacks, and it's something that was used to give Dominus the permission to encroach on, on the roadway by a meter point two, that's four feet, on the road surface. I, I don't believe that that's ever done, been done before. I think it must be a first time in Brampton, and I don't know if it's ever happened anywhere else, but that, that to me is very, very, a very strange situation. And then we go on to the $480,000, Madam Mayor. Now, what's very strange is that whatever, as Counselor Moore has indicated, whatever happened with that, it's very questionable, but the strangest part of this whole matter is that, that the, the property that, 20 George Street, the value of that property was $2 million. But yet, in the, in the public resolution of council, that I have a copy here, it, it shows that the property, the staff issued a check for four, $2,480,000 for that property, and that's, and the price was $2,000,000. So, I want, I would like staff to report back as to why the property was paid 2.48 million, 2,480,000, whereas it should have been paid $2 million. And again, Mr. Rusty I didn't pick that up in this thorough investigation that we paid $480,000 too much, based on the, on the report that staff brought to us. The, then, as Counselor Moore's already mentioned, the $94 million versus the $91 million. You know, I, this one, I, I just couldn't get my head around this, you know? Dominus advised the city, "We made a mistake, a mathematical error." And when I start, when I picked up on that, staff, they, they said that, well, the answer I got is, "Well, we couldn't fix the price because that's price fixing." And I got an email from Treasury to say that the procurement bylaw does not allow, not allow the fixing of a mathematical mistakes. But then I went into, I bought a book from Mr. Stephen Ball that got, I had paid $160 for it. I went through the book, and it said that actually the Planny Act allows the mathematical errors to be corrected before the tender is opened. So, if it's done before, you can't do it after the, the opening of the tender. So, you can go around the table, it's okay, I've got $5 million, you got 5.2, and it's, "Oh, I made a mistake, it should have been 4.8." That, that's not allowed. But it was allowed to make the, the adjustment, and staff did not make that adjustment. And Mr. Rusty I, you didn't pick up on that. Basically, staff gave, were very generous, and gave Dominus an additional $3 million of taxpayers' money. And I, I hope that most of the staff have made that decision living in Brampton, because then you'll be paying a little bit of that extra. I don't know how many people, how many of the staff that made that decision actually live in Brampton, but I tell you, I hope you do, so you'll be paying a little bit of that, that extra. Then, Madam Mayor, again, another issue that was very, very dear to my heart, and what fooled me into, into supporting the staff report. When I met with staff on August 10th, 2011, at 11 o'clock in the morning, I was handed a memo from Hanscom. And the date, the date of this memo was July 27, 2011. And it said, "Look, Hanscom has done an evaluation of this project, and they say that $94.385 million is a fair, reasonable price." Well, guess what? This evaluation was based on, now I'll show everybody. I got it, I got it here. It was based on, it says right here, preliminary design estimates from Dominus. So, this price, $94.385 million, that staff said was a good deal, was based on Dominus' own preliminary design estimates, that when they, but then they have a bidding process. They, they asked contractors to give us a price, just like the City of Brampton, we estimate that road construction will be $10 million. The bidders come in, and some come in at eight, some come in at seven, some come in at eight and a half. Nobody ever comes in at the preliminary design estimates. No one ever does. They, they always sharpen their pencil to give, give a better price. And guess what else? This is the most strange of all. This report is dated August 15th, 2011. Two weeks after, I was given the memo that said that we, we got a good deal. Now, I don't know how that happened, where...
Madam Mayor, if I, if I might speak again...
Sorry.
A matter on the gen, on the agenda, the Auditor General's report, much of what the counselor is referencing is not in the report.
That's right. The way I'm trying to make is...
Can I get a little honor here, please?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to make...
Counselor Spoevery, let Mr. Squires...
Okay. Sorry.
The counselor is asserting that that's the point, but the fact of the matter is the counselor is using this as an opportunity to speak to matters which are issues in litigation without doing anything other than saying that it wasn't the subject of the report. And I would ask that the counselor, and that all counselors in speaking, please not refer to documents that are in litigation, whether or not they are in the public domain. If I may, this is not the forum for such a discussion.
Yeah.
And I would ask as well that the litany of concerns about the project not be recited without having any regard to the Auditor General's report.
Counselor Spoevery, you said you had a number of other questions. Can you go to another question?
Yes, certainly. I just want to make the point that these were very important issues that were missed by the Auditor General, Madam Chair. Basically, that's the point I'm trying to make. I have a couple more here that are, I can't speak to them because they're, they are from the core documents, and so I will skip that. It's, it's a very important one. It's one that, it's costing the taxpayers over $50 million over the next 25 years too much, but I'll skip that. The, the next one, Madam Mayor, and this is, was a public resolution that it's, was as a result of, of Dominus, last year, came to the city and asked, back in, I think it was June of last year, came to the city and said, "Listen, we'd like to get into a completion, a construction completion agreement, and because the project, we figure it's going to be done by September of 2014, it'll be completed, so this, you know, we're ready to get into that completion agreement." So, anyway, the report was quite convincing, council approved it, and we got into a completion agreement, that the project was supposed to have been finished last September. By hold and behold, September came along, and the project never got finished. I questioned the C.A.O. of the day, "What's going on?" He told us that this, this was going to be finished by September. It's not finished yet. You know, why were we given this, this leading information? And you know what Mr. Corbett told us, told me and Counselor Moore? Well, we had to get into this agreement because the banks stopped giving Dominus money. They run out of money, the, the construction money, they have no more money left. So, in order to, in order to finish a project...
Counselor, can I just interrupt? This doesn't sound like a comment related to the report we have in front of our...
Yes, it does.
I'm just trying to get you to relate it.
The point, the point is...
You've been at this for 28 minutes, I just want you to stick to the report. That's what we have to talk about tonight, that's what the special meeting is for.
Madam Mayor, I made a comment before...
So, I'm asking you, you could please focus on the report.
I said that this report has raised more questions than answers, and, and my comment is that Mr. Rusty I was to do a thorough investigation, and he never even mentions this in his report. So, all these issues that I've raised, that really are the, the nuts and bolts of the whole issue, none of them have been addressed in Mr. Rusty I's report.
Okay. Thank you. Are you done?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it truly is unfortunate that seven new members of council, six and the mayor, have to deal with this, when at the beginning of this process, whether we voted against this or voted for it, we were told that this was going to be done by the city manager and a former mayor. This will be finished before we even go into an election year, so in other words, it would have been finished by 2013, and here we are in 2015, with seven new members that have to live this. And four of us have lived it for a lot of years. It's too bad for you guys that you have to go through this, unfortunately. I have one question for Mr. Rusty I before I make my comments, and that is, Mr. Rusty, did you hold back anything because of the lawsuit?
I didn't, I didn't. I'm sorry, to you, Madam Mayor. I didn't express conclusions with respect to the legality of the disqualification of the bid of Inzola. I could have done so, but I felt that that would not be appropriate. I, I thought it would, the court might feel it inappropriate for a public report. But, no, I did not withhold any significant or relevant information or conclusions in my report by reason of the pending litigation. I, I was very, very careful to avoid it, but I don't think that it was necessary for the purposes of my report to actually comment on issues involved in the litigation, primarily because they will be dealt with by the court on the basis of sworn testimony. And so, it's a matter of basically yielding to a, to a, to a higher power. But, no, I, I think I completed a, a complete report, avoiding prejudicing the litigation, but at the same time, holding nothing relevant back.
Okay. And that brings up a couple more questions for me then. Second, I'm going to ask you another question then, because you had mentioned earlier to another questioner that you had invoiced each month. So, at what point were, and you reviewed the tapes, and what Mr. Corbett had told us was $50,000 to $60,000 the cost. We put our hands in the air, I put my hand in the air, because $50,000 to $60,000, not your fault, I blame you for, for the war, but if you invoiced for each month, when were you at that threshold, let's say $60,000? Can you tell us? Any idea?
I don't, I didn't bring a, a list of the amounts and dates of my accounts, just as a ballpark. I've been, as I say, this, this year, there was a two-month period in which I go relatively low, so a great amount of the, the bulk of my accounts would have been in the period when I was here in City Hall in the office, coming in every day.
In the last year?
So, the last year. So, well, I would say probably the end of November.
Which begs another question, Madam Mayor, when Counselors Spoevery was always asking those questions about what we were at, why we weren't told if we were invoiced every month, where we were at. Just a point I wanted to make. Was it, was it, was it, okay, sorry. I can remember somebody did ask, sorry if I wasn't Counsel Spoevery, I remember somebody kept asking, and we finally, I think we finally got an answer, we were up at the 160 threshold, America, so it shocked us all, as somebody said earlier. Which leads me to a lot of other things that I have, I've had a problem with right from the beginning of this, and that is, if certain things were going on, as one of the council members talked about, the emails that were out there, and if the emails that were out there, and I won't talk specifically which ones, because I'll be stopped, I know with a lawyer, and rightfully so, you know, emails that showed things going on between staff and staff and staff and counselors and the mayor and counselors, to me, it was obvious to me that it was a manipulation of the whole process, when we were told specifically, whether we liked it or not, we were told by the city manager of the day and the mayor of the day that we couldn't do that kind of stuff. And somebody might say, "Well, that's just, you know, getting your votes together," and that's the tone, but we were specifically told, once we got down this path, and once we put our hands in the air, which some of us didn't, that we no longer were allowed to talk. And I can't remember how many times when certain, I remember Counselor Calhoun asked a lot of questions, I asked a lot of questions, Counselor Moore, another counselor sitting over here asked questions, we were told, "You don't need to know that. It's none of your business." That's what we were told, publicly told that kind of stuff. And that irritated me to hell. And then when I look at all this, and I wonder why, you know, if those emails were there, if they were, if they were reviewed, and if the process had gone back, if you went back and looked at the tapes, it's all public, it's all in council meetings, it's all at, I remember Mr. Bryden being at one of the, one of the public meetings and asking questions and being very frustrated, he couldn't get the answer, and I asked the exact same question, thinking, "Well, maybe the answer would be a councilman will ask," no, I didn't get the answer either. So, the whole process was frustrating, and I thought what we would get today was a review of all that stuff, because that's what we were asking for. We were really, this council was asking for it, to review the whole process and come back, and if that was, those, if those emails and things like that were in there, I'm wondering why they didn't, they... they didn't, they didn't get into it. You know, the whole process right from the beginning has been very frustrating. And I'm going to go back and mention one more thing, the George Street North property, that all of a sudden, we had to find out really by accident that what had happened with that. That, those sort of things shouldn't happen to council members. And the council asked us why we don't know, and we have to ask staff why we weren't told and then don't get an answer. You know, I just, it becomes frustrating, and you wonder why these folks are mad. Well, that's why, because we're just mad, some of us. You know, and I was looking up in the audience, trying to find somebody, because I remember the day we were taking the vote, and we had delegations come up here telling us what a wonderful thing it was. I'm looking around for them. I don't see them here today. I know the mayor stacked the deck. I know she had her friends up there and had them come forward to tell us, tell us that it was a wonderful deal. But now, now they're not here. I wonder what happened. I guess maybe they saw the light. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think since there's seven out of 11 new people on council, there's a lot of research we had to do. But I do commend some of the residents, they've been, you know, reading up on it, and they've become well-versed in the report and what's going on as well. And also want to commend some of the councillors, councillor Moore and councillor Sprowary, I guess, for giving us a little bit more insight as they were on the previous council. But again, like a lot of the councillors here as well, we do have a lot more questions than answers after reading this report. But just, I'm just curious, Mr Rustai had stated that he was giving monthly updates to staff as to what the costs were, and I'm just wondering why this wasn't being conveyed to council. So I'm not sure if somebody can answer that now, or if that's something we can get, answer that another time. Can we get that answered now?
We can. Chief Patterson?
Simmons, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, sorry, Simmons, Simmons.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. The management, the administration of the interim auditor general's investigation was handled exclusively through the chief administrative officer's office. And so the processing of the invoices and any reporting would have come through that. So we can't really speak to why, nothing came to council's attention. But I can tell you that within the past 30 days, acting CAO Paul and myself have assumed that file and otherwise addressed what we found to be some administrative and contract management weaknesses.
Right. So I do appreciate that you guys, within the last 30 days, have done that. So I guess, just to clarify that, I guess the CAO, the former CAO Corbett, wasn't relaying that information to staff from, if I'm correct, sorry, to council, just to clarify.
Through you, Madam Mayor. That's correct. He was managing the arrangements with Mr Rustai and Mr Manuele and Fay Booker. I will also comment, though, that there had been no earlier requests from council for those amounts. But when the requests were made, Chief Simmons and myself did search out the billings that had been come in and have assembled a report for you that's in front of you today that itemizes those amounts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm your last speaker, I think, unless somebody else gets on the board afterwards. I want to thank my fellow council members for their comments tonight. In September 2014, the previous council asked George Rustai to investigate the process and the administration of the Southwest Quadrant Project. Before I offer my recommendations on this report, I think it's important to acknowledge the paralyzing impact of this investigation and what it's wrought on City Hall. When I decided to run for mayor, I promised that following the election, we would implement a plan that would raise the bar to meet transparency and accountability expectations of the citizens of Brampton. To regain public trust, I called in an auditor to review the city of Brampton's books in order to give residents, businesses, and council clarity regarding the real status of Brampton's finances. In my platform, I also promised to address concerns with the city's procurement processes by ensuring that policies and practices were put in place that meet the needs of the city while respecting taxpayers. In order to boost public confidence in local governance, we need to have an honest conversation about what's working, what isn't, and get all the facts on the table. Over the last few years, this city has faced a number of situations that I believe have compromised the public's respect and trust in our organization and for those who hold elected office. Over the short time I've been leading City Hall, I've become increasingly aware of a seriously toxic and dysfunctional work environment. There's been a lot of finger-pointing and allegations of wrongdoing, in particular regarding the process and the project that we've discussed this evening. From my perspective, it seems that city staff have shouldered the lion's share of the blame. I strongly believe that the vast majority of staff that work at the city of Brampton are hardworking, trustworthy, and dedicated. This investigation arose after allegations were made that some staff demonstrated favoritism, that they made decisions without proper authority, that they miscalculated or misrepresented costs, or that they failed in their duty to advise council of problems. And worse yet, they intentionally misled council. In the present situation, processes and protocols were put in place to protect the city from political bias and interference. The auditor general's report finds that while this framework addressed the mechanics of the processes, this did little to address the concerns over what saw as an untested and highly secretive process. So how do we move forward? We need to learn from our experiences and find solutions so it doesn't happen again, and then move on to deliver results and rebuild the trust of the public. Staff wasn't the only group accused of wrongdoing. There were questions of council members being lobbied and causing undue influence. There were allegations of bias and paybacks. At the end of the day, the competitive dialogue negotiations and the accompanying reports and recommendations to council were delivered by some of the city's most experienced and senior staff. The previous council received advice from a number of independent and expert consultants in order to inform their decision-making. Council explicitly and implicitly delegated staff substantial responsibility in the conduct of the process. Despite the desire of council to transfer risks and potential cost overruns associated with this project to the private sector, the city, and more importantly, council, bears the ultimate political risks associated with these types of projects. At the same time our staff and council were placed under suspicion, too, so too was the interim auditor general himself. Mr Rustai conducted a time-consuming investigation and reviewed thousands of pages of documents, only to be accused of having a conflict of interest, and many are now questioning the integrity of the investigation. Nearly five years ago, city council, under the leadership of the former mayor Susan Fennell, decided to issue a request for proposals to commence a project which launched our city into a competitive dialogue process. Three companies initially participated in this process. Ultimately, one bid was disqualified, and this matter is currently the subject of a legal action in the Ontario Superior Court of Justice, in which the city of Brampton is represented by legal counsel retained by our insurers to defend this action. This report was intended to address seven broad areas of concern raised by both council and the public. First, concerns regarding the process and whether it was in compliance with principles of procurement. Secondly, concerns regarding the fairness of the procurement process. Third, concerns about the final cost and value. Four, questions about why the competitive dialogue process was chosen. Five, questions as to why there was so much secrecy around the bidding process. Six, questions as to whether there was compliance with the city's purchasing bylaws and council policies. And lastly, concerns regarding a lack of public input. The interim auditor general, for the most part, has indicated satisfaction with the process and the administration of the Southwest Quadrant process. Mr Rustai stated that it was difficult to arrive at recommendations which would be of assistance in dealing with future transactions of this nature, since the Southwest Quadrant was unique, and the likelihood of a project of this magnitude and complexity arising again is somewhat low. Frankly, I find it unfortunate that after almost eight months of investigation, there are no substantive recommendations from the interim auditor general. Earlier this year, you will recall that Jim McCarter conducted a financial review of the city of Brampton, and in his report, he addressed the financing of the Southwest Quadrant project. Mr McCarter said he believed the taxpayers would want the city to finance infrastructure projects in whichever manner costs them the least. I agree. Over the course of this investigation into the Southwest Quadrant project, we learned that the city council chose to finance the new building through a 25-year lease to own P3 financing contract. Furthermore, the decision to go this route was largely driven by the previous council's direction to senior staff that no external debt be used to finance the construction. What lessons can be learned from this decision? I think it's clear. Council must be better aware of the importance of project governance, and that a debt-free philosophy should not override doing what will ultimately be the best value for taxpayers. When I began my comments, I indicated I would be offering some recommendations so that we can move forward. As many of you know, I've had preliminary discussions with the Ontario Ombudsman, Mr Moran, regarding Bill 8, and my desire to have him visit Brampton and review our day-to-day processes. Until the regulation passes, I offer the following suggestions. The first, and it will be a motion that we'll discuss with the following, my presentation, that the mayor be directed to request the province of Ontario to appoint the Ombudsman of Ontario to initiate an inquiry into the affairs of the corporation of the city of Brampton, and in particular, into potential misconduct in procurement, real estate, planning approvals, and any other area. Secondly, the Ombudsman of Ontario has long recommended that municipalities need to improve the overall transparency and accountability in their meeting practices by keeping better records, including making and properly storing audio and video recordings of closed or in-camera sessions. In March of this year, the city of Brampton removed the $250 fee previously charged to residents requesting investigations into closed-door or in-camera meetings. In the interest of seeking best practices, I intend to bring forward a notice of motion to the May 20 council meeting to initiate the practice of making digital audio recordings of all in-camera or closed meetings in order to demonstrate the city of Brampton's commitment to better and good governance. Years from now, the city of Brampton and the Southwest Quadrant renewal project will serve as a case study. There will be lessons to be learned. Ultimately, I believe the former mayor and council wanted to be trailblazers with a signature building in our downtown core we could all be proud of. We did, in fact, blaze a trail. And now municipalities will be understandably more cautious with the procurement process used in major projects, given our experience. I personally believe any approach to municipal procurement, regardless of the method or type, should be based on clear understanding and broader public awareness of accountabilities and expectations for the members individually and together as a council, the staff and the public. Why? I make that suggestion because I believe it's easier to manage the relationships between participants and to understand better their respective roles in circumstances where projects cannot be compromised through lobbying and politicization. Transparency and accountability in government must be more than a commitment to better inform the public. It's a way of doing business that builds public trust. Strong ethical leadership is necessary to shape the culture of City Hall, which is particularly important as our city grows and the challenges we face become more complex. It's crucial we have rules, guidelines, and systems in place to ensure our leaders discharge their responsibilities in a way that reflects the values of our community. Brampton has been lagging behind other similarly sized cities, and these recommendations, I believe, will assist in making our city more accountable and transparent in the years ahead. So we have no more other speakers on the board. We have two reports here, a report from George Rustai, the final report of the interim auditor general on the Southwest Quadrant renewal plan to be received, and D2, which is a report from Peter Simmons with regards to the costs associated with Southwest Quadrant development investigation. And I need a mover and a seconder, I think, to receive. Do I have that? Okay. Moved by councillor Bowman, seconded by councillor Fortini on Mr Simmons' report. Any comments or questions? Councillor Sprowary.
No, I have, I have a, Madam Mayor, I have, after you present your motion, I also have a further motion to present.
Okay. How about we get through these first?
Yep.
All those in favor of the costs associated with the Southwest Quadrant, this is item D2. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. Okay, this is item D1, which is the final report for receipt, moved by councillor Plushy, seconded by councillor Dillon. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. So the motion you have, I believe every member of council has this, is moved by myself, seconded by councillor John Sprowary. Whereas the interim auditor general has submitted his report to council regarding the Southwest Quadrant investigation, and whereas the report tabled by the interim auditor general did not provide any recommendations for council on which to act upon, therefore be it resolved that the mayor be directed to request the province of Ontario to appoint the Ombudsman of Ontario to initiate an inquiry as defined under the Public Enquiries Act into the affairs of the corporation of the city of Brampton, and in particular, into potential misconduct in procurement, real estate, planning approvals, and any other area. Any comments or questions? I, councillor Miles.
So does this motion, Madam Mayor, mean that there will be another full inquiry into the Southwest Quadrant procurement process?
Councillor Miles, this does not speak to the process of the Southwest Quadrant.
So the answer is no?
No.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? We ready to vote, council? Can I ask for a recorded vote, Mr Plushy?
Recorded vote's been requested. All in favor of the motion, please stand to be counted. Showing in favor of the motion is councillor Gibson, councillor Miles, councillor Fortini, councillor Bowman, councillor Maderos, mayor Jeffrey, councillor Dillon, councillor Sprowary, councillor Plushy, councillor Willands, councillor Moore. The motion carries unanimously 11 to 0.
Mr Sprowary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, from my understanding, the Ombudsman does not take responsibility or authority in investigating municipalities until October of this year. So just as a backup, and in the event that the province, as we cannot get involved at this point because of the authority has not been delegated to the Ombudsman yet, I have a backup motion I like to present, and I'll read it for, just for ease. So the motion states, whereas the Southwest Quadrant investigation by Mr Rustai was to be completed by the end of December 2014, that cost $50,000 to $60,000. Whereas the auditors' report has been presented to council, and Mr Rustai has charged the city $269,000. Whereas the taxpayers of Brampton expect good value for the tax dollars, therefore be it resolved that in the event the Ontario Ombudsman does not accept the file, that council of the city of Brampton hire Mr Stephen Bald to first review and evaluate Mr Rustai's and Mr Manuele's work done to date to ensure that the city funds paid to them to date represent good value to the Brampton taxpayers. Second, that Mr Bald conduct an independent review of the Southwest Quadrant project to ascertain if in any consistencies in the procurement process to ascertain if in any consistencies in the procurement process, and report back to council within two months for the sum of $50,000 maximum. Third, that Mr. Bald be given full access to all city resources that deemed necessary to conduct the investigation immediately. Fourth, that staff report back to council why the city paid $2,480,000 for the first choice property on 20 George Street. And fifth, that staff investigate and report back on the unfinished work on the properties at Number 2, Number 4, Number 6, Elizabeth Street, and that Item 4 and 5 be acted by staff, be acted on by staff. So basically, I'm asking that 4 and 5 be acted on, and the others is a standby. Also, Madam Mayor, I recognize that a lot of money's been spent to date, and I know that the taxpayers are tired of paying and paying and paying. So therefore, just to show my commitment on how important I believe that this matter has to be dealt with appropriately and clearly and openly, I'm donating or contributing $1,000 to the effort. So in case Mr., so this is in case Mr. Bald is hired, this $1,000 will go towards his
So, Mr. Spolveri, what you read actually isn't exactly what is in front of us, so just so council knows, I kind of tried to follow along, it's not exactly the same. So, legal staff, Mr. Squires, did you want to comment on this?
Madam Mayor, before council considers the motion, your legal counsel would recommend further legal advice before proceeding with this.
And, Madam Mayor, I also have councillor Moore, who's also written a check for $1,000 towards the costs. So here's another check for $1,000.
Councillor Gibson.
I guess, thank you, Madam, I guess I'm a little confused, because that's not what the motion says.
No, it doesn't.
So we need to clarify, because this motion, John, sets out staff, or sets out us to do something, and you, but you said in the event, the motion doesn't say that, so we need to be very clear. I agree with you on the particular Number 5. I think you need to take out a couple of these and just direct staff, and then maybe change the motion, say in the event that the province doesn't look, you would have those other ones. But that's not what the motion says, so I can't vote on this motion unless you clarify that.
Councillor, please, I have a list, and I did alert council that what is handwritten on here is not what was handed to us, and I just wanted to make sure it was clear that there was some editing that happened after this was handed to us. So councillor Madiros.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. And again, councillor Spolveri, there's parts of the motion I would support, but Mr. Stephen Bald, I'm not familiar with him, so I'd be more comfortable not only consulting with legal, but also to understand who are the experts in the field. I don't want to revisit this in six months and find out the person we hired is not credible or there's issues with him. So I'd feel more comfortable amending the motion, maybe leaving it to council determining who we can hire to investigate.
So councillor Spolveri, before I get back to you, can I just ask that we wait until we hear back from the province of Ontario, and that you're certainly capable and you have the opportunity to bring this back?
We could table that.
We could table it, and you might want your checks back right now?
Hold on. Yeah, 4 and 5 should pass.
So I would be happier if you separated them than keep them as one, because I think they are very different recommendations for council, and I think that that would be... So, because your 4 is different than the 4 I have here, as is your 5.
Yeah.
So they're all different, so in order to provide real clarity to our clerk, we need to, do you want this back so you can use it as a template?
No.
Sure?
Through you, Madam Mayor, as the councillor is redrafting his motion. In our procedure bylaw, we don't have necessarily a provision for tabling motions, sort of putting them in suspension, so the practice has been to withdraw the motion where there's another motion that's carried, as is the case of your motion that's on the screen that's carried by a recorded vote. And if at such a time in the future that the province decides not to pursue the request of the city of Brampton, then the councillor's within his rights to bring forward an appropriate motion at that point in time.
So are you putting these two motions together?
I'm just applying a new one, saying that staff report back on the $2,480,000 that paid for 20 George Street.
Yep.
And that staff investigate Number 2, Number 4, Number 6, Elizabeth Street, the unfinished work on those private properties.
Which is based on the delegation we heard this evening?
Right, right.
Okay. So, staff, did council want me to go through those two issues and we can discuss them anymore? So I think the report will say that staff report back to council about why the city paid $2,480,000 for George Street, and that staff investigate and report back on unfinished work on 2, 4, 6, Elizabeth Street. Any comments or questions on those two reports that will come back? You want to vote on it? Everybody ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. Yeah, you get the check. Don't leave, we know where you live. Okay, so we're getting to the close here. We have no further correspondence for tonight's meeting. We're at public question period. This is item F. This is the item where we invite the members of public to come forward to the podium, ask any questions about any decision made by council at tonight's meeting. There's a 15-minute limit for all questions and answers. Thank you. Are there any questions that haven't been answered this evening about decisions we made at tonight's meeting? If so, please come forward, state your name for the record, and your questions succinctly related to tonight's special council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish I was at the table like...
You raised this before you had your motion, but there is...
Mr. Sanderson, can I, or Mr. John Sanderson, could you please just put your name forward so the clerk has it? Not everybody would know in their room.
Sheriff Minister Jeffrey, I'll do that. My name's, my name's John Sanderson, I'm a resident of downtown Brampton, a former regional councillor in the city of Brampton, and I represented the wards 3 and 4, and it took a lot of courage for Mrs. Meisner to come out tonight to be a delegation to speak to the issues that she's been putting up with, her family's been putting up with over there. I took Chief Ball over there one day for a tour, and I've had numerous other people over there for tours, and it is, it's just, it's a disgrace, the way that they've been able to move that building back and put it on their property line, and now they got all this other stuff to deal with.
Mr. Sanders, can you form this in a question?
I was just going to do that. I was just going to say, that motion that you just passed, and you talked about Mrs. Meisner's property and the Spurles property, there's one other property on 87 Queen Street West, which I was in there today, it's a dry cleaner's there, and it's, it needs some work done at the back as well, it's been left in a mess, and I asked the lady how it's going, and she said she was told by staff that they have no idea when they're going to finish it. So their property needs some attention back there as well, it's only a little bit to be done, and then she can go ahead and plant her flowers, which she was promised that would be done a year ago. So it's Number 87 Queen Street West.
Is that a question?
The question is, can you add it to that motion? 87 Queen Street West.
So council, just to be clear, we have to reopen the issue. We need, I think it's a two-thirds vote to do that. So council, do we have a two-thirds vote to reopen the question? Thank you, I think we do. And councillor Spolveri, councillor Moore, you want to add 87?
Queen Street West. Yep.
West, is that right?
Queen Street West.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor of the amended motion, all those opposed, that's carried. Thank you. Any other questions here?
Madam Mayor, councillors, when I came in, I was asked if I wanted to speak tonight, and I said I'd like to sit back and hear what the discussion is going to be about.
Did you say your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, apologize. Don Haynes, resident Brampton, maybe one of the longest residing residents at this meeting this evening, not discussing my age, thank you. One of the things that I wanted to sit back and listen, and that came out tonight, my understanding of the process, that once council turned it over to the city managers, everything was confidential. What I've heard tonight is emails going back and forth. I don't pretend to understand the inner workings of council and the city staff, but if something is secret, then it stays secret with that group. But what I've heard tonight, if it is fact, it did not stay secret with that group. If they had to come back and ask somebody, wouldn't the whole of council been involved, rather than maybe one or two or three people, depending on their position? So I'm just asking the question, secrecy is secrecy. I don't believe what I've heard tonight, if it is actual fact, took place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. I think really we're going to let the, all the questioners go, if that's possible, because I really don't want to get into a debate. Councillor Miles, are you going to wait till I acknowledge you or not? Okay, councillor Miles.
Okay, sir. Mr. Haynes, I wanted to respond to your question.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, I don't have the dates of the emails, but once an in-camera report is provided to members of council, then those members of council can have discussion with staff and with each other. So in this particular instance, even though I don't have the date, I believe the report had been released to members of council, the in-camera report, and the discussion was taking place.
My point was not in camera.
Thank you, I'm not going to have a debate, sorry, Mr. Haynes.
No, I'm just, I'm just answering your question.
Councillor Miles, we're not going to have a debate in the council chambers. He's asked this question, you've answered. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Viksham Liansky, I'm a resident of Brampton. I guess I have two questions. One is, the Dominus contract of the city of Brampton was a secret contract, it was a confidential contract, it was meant to be that. Now that it's all done, is that secrecy removed, and is it open to the public to read all the documents, including the contract? Because that will lead to my second question, which is, I understand now, the city of Brampton is the lesssee of the building, and Dominus or another company that has bought the leasehold rights is the landlord. And I would like to know if that lease agreement is now a public document and can be read, and whether there's any options to break the lease. If the city of Brampton is the tenant and doesn't like the lease, maybe there's an out, and we won't have to pay all this money we're talking about.
So I don't know who wants to tackle this one. I'm assuming maybe some of our legal staff, would you want to tackle the, whether the contract is open now for discussion? Mr. Squires?
I can speak to some of the questions raised. The Dominus contract, from the time it was signed by the parties, has always been a public document, but to the extent that it contains, the lease documents contain any third-party commercial or financial information, if it were released, it might be redacted in certain respects. But my answer is that a copy of the lease documents could be obtained from the office of the city clerk.
And who is, who is the landlord now?
So can I get an answer to your question, Mr. Patterson?
Sure.
Could you answer the other question with regards to the leasing?
Yes, to the delegate, the landlord is now Fengate Capital. The mortgagee is Canada Life Assurance, and there was an assignment or a transfer of the, what was referred to as the leasehold interest, I believe the proper legal term is the leased fee interest to them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Our next item of business is item G, which is our confirming bylaw. I have a motion by councillor Spolveri, seconded by councillor Willans, that the following bylaw, before council at a special meeting on May 4th, be given the required number readings taken by the mayor and the city clerk and the corporate seal affixed thereto. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. Our last item of business is item H, which is the adjournment. I have a motion by councillor Fortini, seconded by councillor Bowman, that council do now adjourn to meet again for a regular meeting of council on Wednesday, May 6th at 1:00 p.m. or at the call of the mayor. I want to thank everybody in the public who stayed so long this evening, for your attendance and your participation this evening. We thank, we really do thank you for your respectful consideration and decisions on the matter. Before we adjourn tonight, I just want to remind everyone that the council's next meeting, May 6th at 1:00 p.m., and Wednesday, May 20th at 1:00 p.m. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn? All those opposed? That carries. This meeting is now adjourned. Please enjoy the rest of your evening, and have a safe trip home this evening.